If anyone's here. Oh hello Squirtle, how are you today? Oh, looks like I got a bot that got deleted, how about that? Okay. Yes, we're just gonna get started, since really this is just for Mad Refugee and I just wanted this to be live in case anyone else was wanting to watch. Um, but yes, are you still there, Mish?
I'm here.
Perfect. Today was wonderful, but you're tired as well, oh? No, I have graduated and I am about to, I, this is the, this is the only like scholarly hat that I had. And so I'm trying to be on theme. Anyway, I'm definitely not gonna be wearing this for very long. Um, okay, let me make sure this PowerPoint is working. I actually forgot to put a window for my webcam, but I also didn't design my PowerPoint for a webcam, so. That's probably fine too.
There's so much movement. So many gifts. Wibbly wobbly timey wimey? I've seen it played, I played part of it, but didn't get super, super far. Well, I say not super far, but I don't know, like, the over. Did you, did you forget to add a source? Scene. I mean, I can let them know that she's working on getting the audio fixed. That seems like. Yeah, just adding an audio?
Uh, it's source. Okay, can you guys hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, perfect. Sorry, this is a new, I made a new, I had to make a new scene to have like a windowed, I, I hadn't made a scene yet for just a browser window. Oh, I can hear myself, that's because, that's not muted, there we go. Okay, perfect. So, all you guys missed was me just explaining how fun the Chrono Cross time, the, the Chrono franchise timeline is and how confusing it is. And it's gonna be a great time, I'm sure, I'm just gonna make all of y'all even more confused, cuz that's how I explain things, but it'll be good times anyway. Um, anyway, so, um, and then I just went to this, this is just the next slide we went to, and all I was saying was, um, before we get started into the actual plot of Chrono Cross, it is an official sequel of Chrono Trigger, so there's a couple things you have to know about Chrono Trigger in order for the actual, like, the quote-unquote, like, plot of Chrono Cross to make sense. Um, so yeah, here we've got the cast of Chrono Trigger. Um, but it's fine, you actually don't need to know who they are, because the Chrono Cross time, uh, plot renders them irrelevant. Yay, that's why a lot of people from Chrono Trigger really hate Chrono Cross, um, except Luca, we like Luca, she's relevant.
All I know is Wonder Shot.
Um, but yeah, the, there's really only kind of like three things you really need to know about Chrono Trigger. Um, and that is Lavos over here, who's the, the big bad. Um, and Lavos is basically an alien entity that crash-landed on the planet roughly, what was it, sixty-five, like, million B.C. or whatever, like some ridiculously long time ago. Um, and has since been basically going to destroy the planet, and that's the, that's mostly the time, like, that's mostly what the plot of Chrono Trigger is, is them trying to stop Lavos from destroying the planet. Um, but other things kinda happen at the same time, by landing on the planet Lavos kinda gifted humans with magic accident, or as a off-by-product thing. Um, and there's this place from twelve thousand B.C. called the Kingdom of Zeal, who really advanced in human technology and of course, you know, into the, got into very unethical science and wanted to harness Lavos directly and did some crazy experiments on that. And the only thing you really have to know, without getting into too many spoilers, that really have nothing to do with Chrono Cross is there's the Queen of Zeal who was growing mad from the experiments, and one of her daughter's name is Scala, and when, surprise, surprise, the experiment goes wrong, um, Scala just kind of gets, like, there's like this whole, like, crash, it, it's not the time crash, but like basically this whole time distortion thing happened, and we know about other characters in Chrono Cross, like this guy over here. Um, but Scala, it, like, one of the big questions at the end of Chrono Cross that people had was what the hell happened to Scala? Because the game literally does not address it. Well, that is the backbone of Chrono Cross, is kind of answers what happened to Scala, and it's related to Lavos, because that was the accident that poofed her into non-existence. Um, the other thing to know about Chrono Trigger is, this is the Kingdom of Garuda, which is where the majority of the game takes place. Um, here's Luca's house, and I just put this in here because it's kind of the only, like, direct recreation that's in Chrono Cross, and I thought that was interesting. Um, and this is where Kid grew up, who's one of the characters, and then down here in this continent is Por, um, who, I guess in the twenty years since the original game happened, and then where the present Chrono Cross game takes place, Por, uh, grows a military and decides it wants to, like, conquer the world, I guess. And that's, that's all you need to know about Chrono Trigger, to know, to get Chrono Cross. Um, oh, and then I put this slide in here just to have a map. Um, wait, what's happening? Oh, okay, yeah, I just put this in here to have a map to reference in case that'll make things easier later on. Um, so this is the Archipelago of El Nido, which is where the game of Chrono Cross takes place. And then this is the, a, a larger map of the mainland, it doesn't really have its own name, they just call it the mainland, I guess. Um, this is a fan theory of where El Nido is located in the original Chrono Cross map. Um, but there is no official, like, confirmation of that, which I always think is interesting. Anyway, so we'll probably come back to this slide a bunch. Um, these are the plot devices of Chrono Cross. Um, this is, like, basically every, every story element of this game can be represented by one of these four characters, which is why I'm calling them plot devices instead of characters. Um, but yeah, these are the four main characters, we got Kid, we got Serge, who is our silent protagonist, we've got, um, Harl, and we've got Lynx.
He's the silent protagonist until he's not.
He's the silent protagonist until he's not, exactly. And I, I actually kind of have a duplicate slide of this at the end, we'll get back to, like, after I, I explain the story, we can get back to this slide if you actually wanna get into, like, who the, like, what these characters are actually supposed to be according to the game, so that'll be fun when we get there. Um, but yeah, once upon, oh, I forgot to do something, but, uh, that's fine. Yeah, so, once upon a time, um, Serge, oh no, there's this girl named Lena, and she's all like, "I want Komodo scale necklace, cuz they're very beautiful", and she asked Serge to go kill the Komodos to do that. Um, and he does, and it's great, and then they go to the beach, which it turns out, um, it's the exact same spot that ten years, oh, so this, this all takes place officially like twenty years after, so it's the year tw- ten twenty A.D., I guess, on the timeline. Um, and ten years, this happens, this very beach is where ten years ago Serge was, like, almost killed and drowned by a killer panther. But, you know, that's, you know, nice that he didn't die. Um, and while they're reminiscing, he ends up going into the, another dimension where it fa- it turns out Lena didn't know who he was, and Lena's all like, "Wait, but he surged did die ten years ago, and his, there's his tombstone right there", and Serge is all like, "Why am I dead in this place? Like, I'm not dead." Um, and that's when these, this guy named Karsh comes in and is like, "Hey yo, you're a ghost boy and I'm looking for you", like, "Come with us", and then this chick named Kid comes in out of nowhere and is like, "Not so fast, I'm gonna save you", and they, and then they fight, um, and they brush him off. And she's all like, "Yeah, let's figure, I wonder why those guys were after you", but also, those same guys have this thing called the Frozen Flame, and I'm after it, so you should come with me and help me find the Frozen Flame. Uh, and maybe you'll find out why these guys are after you at the same time, and he's like, "Sure, whatever", or he could be like, "Nah", you know, the game lets you choose. Um, so that's when we get to Viper Manor. And these are basically all of the side-characters that matter, except for, I mean, there's one other group of characters that we'll meet later, and these are all the characters of Viper Manor. Um, this is Karsh, the guy that fought us, and then we've got the Salt, the Shaker Brothers, Salt and Pepper and Ketchup. Um, really all you need to know is, there's this group called, like, there's, well, they're the Acacia Dragoons of Viper Manor. This lovely place right here, and there's the Four Divas who are the most powerful of them. Uh, these are the current Four Divas, except we know that this guy named Dario is missing, presumably dead. Um, and then there's the old Four Divas, which we find out, Radius, who in Serge's timeline, um, is the mayor or of the village, I guess, um, and then we'll find out more about these guys later. We, we discover Lynx, who were like, "Oh, you're, you're probably the bad guy", and this chick named Harley, who's like, "Whatever, like, I'm the bad guy's right-hand man, I guess, but also, like, you're a really cool person, Serge", um, and then General Viper, who's in command, his daughter Riddle, and then, um, Glenn is Dario, who's missing little brother, um, and I think that's all you need to really know about them. You end up fighting the Four Divas a bunch at this point in the manor, or not, just Marley in the manor. Um, and then you find out that the, and we're just like, "What's the Frozen Flame? Is it here?", and we don't really find out, because it turns out it's not there. Um, but we instead.
So is the open, huh? So is the opening, the, in the Davas that Pierre talks about, that's Dario being missing?
Yes.
Okay, cuz when you recruit Pierre, he's like, "There's an opening in the Davas and I'm gonna join them",
Exactly.
It's cuz Dario's went missing.
Yep, that's it, and then there's another optional scene, which I actually didn't trigger, I realized later, I'm like, "Oh, I didn't trigger this scene", but there's, there's an area in Terminal, like, with the sword, kinda, it, it's like a memorial area. Um, and there is a scene where you, you see Riddle and Glenn there, and that's why Glenn wanted the flowers, was to, like, lay it at, cuz like that, that sword is kind of his grave, you know, M.I.A. grave. Um, so that's, you kinda meet them at that point if you trigger the scene, which I didn't trigger the scene. But yeah, that's what Pierre, Pierre is a te- Pierre is aspiring to be one of the Four Divas, because there's a, a currently in a, a vacancy that needs to be filled. Uh, yeah, and I think that's really all you need to know about them, when you, I, I, when you storm their manor, it's just a matter of, "Oh, the Frozen Flame's not here", they had this other thing called the Dragon's Tear though, which gave Serge flashbacks about his almost death. Um, and then, yeah, you just meet Harley and Lynx, who you know are, you know, gonna be important later on, and that's about it. And yeah, we, we kinda hear the name Grai, like, we hear these names, but we don't know who they are, really. Um, oh yeah, so that, I just went straight to Goldov, yeah, so we get to, we get to the manor, they don't have the flame, they, so they end up catching us, Kid takes Riddle as hostage to try and escape, and it turns out the only way we can escape is by jumping off the cliff. Um, but that's not before Lynx was able to, uh, throw a poison dagger at Riddle, or at, uh, well, I guess it was at Riddle, and then to save her, uh, Kid took the hit. Um, so that made it so she was lying dead in the bed, and really, we're kind of like,
The best part of the game.
Yeah, the, the best part of the game, because all they're really saying is, "Oh no, she's dead", and, but also, "Oh no, the, the Dragoons are still out there and we gotta stop them", cuz apparently they're gonna actually go after the real Frozen Flame. Um, so we're kind of split between, oh, we should probably help Kid who's dying from a, a, a poison where the cure, you know, is only from an extinct species that doesn't exist anymore. Um, or, you know, we could ignore that and just go for the Dragoons. Um, and Goldov is where we ended up being, oh, whoops, my phone is going off. Stop going off phone. There we go.
Kinda catchy. Gonna be.
I know, I don't, eh, I, I accidentally nudged it, and I actually haven't touched my phone all day, and so that's like all the notifications. Anyway, um, yeah, so Goldov is actually, like, home to a shrine, um. Basically, they're the, the shrine of, for the dragons, they kind of worship the dragons, um, which are, you know, long, you know, no one's ever seen the dragons or anything, they're kind of in sleeping or, you know, hiatus somewhere. Um, and they're the ones that tell us kind of that the, um, the Frozen Flame is, you know, at the, at these ruins called the dra- the, uh, Fort Jagonia. Um, and they're also the ones that tell us that El Nido, where we are, is actually called the land where the dragons sleep, um, which will be relevant later. Um, and then the key to activate this ruin is this thing called the Dragon's Tear, which is what we saw at the manor. Um.
Which ru- which ruin?
Um, Jagon, yeah, Fort Jagonia.
Okay.
So that, this is, so, at this point, part of the exposition that we're button-mashing through in the game is them being all like, "Oh yeah, like, what you're looking for, like, the, the whole purpose of this Frozen Flame, like, or, or, we're expecting the Frozen Flame to be at this dragon ruin", "In order to access this ruin, you need the Dragon's Tear", and it turns out that the thing that Serge was staring into at the manor, the blue thing, is the Dragon's Tear, so. Um. I'm pretty sure that's all you kinda learn at Goldov, um, you can choose to save Kid or not, it, it, you know, it, it doesn't really matter what you end up doing. Um, either way, um, in order to get to this ruin, there's this whole fog mist that was in the way at the entrance, and it turns out that there's a ghost ship in this fog that we encountered. Um, and it turns out, it was a fake ghost ship, and it was just run by this guy named Fargo, um, as his ruse to, you know, I don't know, he's kind of getting in the way of the Dragoons, I guess. Um, I'm sure there's text that actually explains, like, his stance on that. Um, and he ends up, like, capturing you and stopping you from leaving the ship, but there's an actual ghost ship that sho- shows up out of nowhere, and you help them out of the ghost ship situation, and so he's all helpful and is like, "Oh, by the way, so you're after, you know, you wanna get to Fort Jagonia? Well, in order to do that, you have to go through Mount Pyre", and you probably wanna go get the water dragon's blessing, uh, to live through that. Um, so he gives you that advice, um, and yeah, depending on whether or not you save Kid, um, this, we kind of skip through this whole section in the speedrun, because it's, it's basically optional. Um, but if you save Kid or not, or if you decide to save Kid, you have to go through this whole marshland, um, because you're fighting this, this little guy over here that is extinct in, in homeworld, but in alternate worlds is still alive, um, to get the antidote. And there's this whole feud between the fairies and, and the dwarves, because the dwarves live in the marsh, but we, you know, as humans, destroyed the marsh, and so the dwarves end up taking over the Water Dragon Isle, which is where the fairies live. Um, and either way, you end up going to get the blessing of the water dragon, so you can get through Mount Pyre, so you can get to Fort Jagonia. Um, uh, yeah, I think that's, I didn't skip anything, oh, no, no, that's right, that's why I put this here, cuz I knew I'd forget. Um, so when you finish this kind of storyline, you actually end up camping out at Water Dragon Isle, and you actually get some backstory with Kid, and this is when she tells you that she was an orphan, and this girl named Luca raised her, um, and.
I never said her name.
Or, but you're right, you're right, I spoiled it, but yeah, you, all you know is that she was an orphanage, and the orphanage was set on fire by Lynx and Harl, and we, she doesn't really know why he did that, but, you know, he's just a bad guy, so she's out for revenge, it turns out, and as a thief, as part of the, uh, she's also part of a group called the Radical Dreamers, as a thief, um, she is after the Frozen Flame, cuz she knows that Lynx is after the Frozen Flame, so she's kind of wanting to get at it. First is her motivation, that and revenge, so she's out for revenge to get for Lynx, because Lynx ended up, you know, killing everyone at the orphanage. But you're right, she doesn't name names, that's very important. Um, but yeah, so you find that out in this scene, isn't it so great that that's optional, like?
Oh yes.
Like, you don't actually learn anything about Kid, you could skip all of these scenes. Um, but yes, I, it's actually kind of one of my favorite moments in the game a little bit. Um, that's some of my favorite fan art, actually, um. But yeah, so you do, you go to Fort Jagonia, you storm the fort, and you end up having to fight all the elements of the game to kind of access the fort, and when you do, oh yeah, that happens, you get hit by a bat and you hate them. I had to, I had to put that in there.
Batman.
They're the worst, anyway. Yeah, so, so you get to the top of Fort Jagonia, and the Dragon's Tear is sitting on this pedestal, and it turns out the dr- or, um, the Frozen Flame's not there, but you got this Dragon's Tear. Um, and it turns out that really Lynx lured you to body swap with you. Um, so he, your body turns evil, you become Lynx, this semi-human cat. Um, you also kinda get flashbacks to the Killer Panther demon, you know, killing you when you're ten years old, or, or however years old, seven years, six years old, um, ten years ago. Um, and evil hot-topic Serge ends up stabbing Kid to death. Muahahaha. Um, and you actually, Serge had a dream about that, you, you, so they, they pose the beginning of the game as like this dream, flash-forward dream that he's having. Um. Anyway, I don't know, um, but he ends up, uh, yeah, and Lynx also ends up stabbing the General Viper. He basically used the general and the Dragoons to just help him access this area. Um, and that was it, so once they did that, he had no more use for them, so he stabbed him to death. Um, and I think that's all you have to know about this point, I'm pretty sure that's everything that happened from here. Um, yeah, oh, that's right, so he stab, he stabs Kid because she, he ends up being like, "Oh yeah, you wanna kill Lynx, right?", cuz he killed Luca, and she's all like, "Wait, I didn't tell you about that, there's no way you'd know about that", and so she gets suspicious, and that's why he stabs her, cuz he's like, "Oh, oh well, you know, whatever, you're in the way anyway", and stabs her to death. Um, so that happens. Um, oh, oh, but before that happens, he ends up, like, everything in this room shatters. Um, and then you, and then all that, when, when it shatters, this whole portal opens up and you get swallowed up in it. And you, turns out you end up in this place, it's like kind of a land-between type of place. It has an official title, but I forgot to take notes.
I saw Serge.
Yes, uh, I, I had to put little notes here so I'd remember, like, to mention certain things. Um, but yeah, so you end up in this in-between time, um, you meet this, this pretty cool chick named Sprig. Uh, she's pretty cool, I like her, um, cuz she's a doppelganger, she has like a doppelganger power, and she can turn into any monster that you kill, basically. But anyway, Har- Harley gets you out of this place, she, like, poses a bunch of philosophical questions about, like, "Are you Serge? Are you Lynx? Does it matter?", all that stuff.
But you say you're Serge, but literally everybody else says you're Lynx, are you actually Serge?
Yeah, and that's always a fun thing to talk, yeah.
Quick mods, seriously.
Seriously, um, anyway, so ult- ultimately, um, uh, she helps us find a, a way out of this place, um, and we end up back on his homeworld, except, um, he has no way to travel but back to the other dimension, so he's stuck on homeworlds. Um, but he's able to convince his mom that, "Hey, I am your son", um, "Help me", basically. Um, and this is when she kind of, uh, confesses the whole thing about, um, "Yeah, so, by the way, this whole thing happened, you know, when you were about to die", um, "And none, no one could help him", um, so his dad, Wazuki, ended up, uh, oh, and Lena's dad, Miguel, um, took Serge to, they're, they're hoping to get to Marvel, because there's a sage there that hopefully, if anyone on the archipelago would be able to save Serge, they figured this sage would know how to sur- save him, so. They venture out, except, um, the storm, this crazy electrical storm, uh, starts brewing, and this is actually relevant. This, I actually consider this, um, kind of like the inciting in, like, if you're to actually lay out the timeline of Chrono Cross's story, this is like the inciting incident of the story is kind of Serge, um, cries out, cuz he's getting attacked by this panther demon, um, and gets hurt, and then there's this electrical storm. Uh, and that turns out that this is like the most, like, plot-developed thing, it tur- it's kind of related to Scala, and I'll get back to that later. Um, and that's why I put, "Quick, the mods are asleep", because this is also related to, like, the Dead Sea stuff we'll get into. Um, and that's why I put quick the mods are asleep, because this is also related to like the Dead Sea stuff we'll get into later. Um, it's all related to this storm and, uh. Serge's dad trying to save Serge. Um, because they venture out to this place called, uh, oh, so we get met, we, we learn about the Sea of Eden. With Lynx, and so we're like, oh, I guess to get our bodies back, we probably need to go to this place called the Sea of Eden. But it turns out when we get back to Terminus, this is, this is original Ter- oh, I, I tried to make the slides, if it's gray, then that means we're on another. World, and if it's white, we're on homeworlds. And it's kind of confusing because another world is actually the original, like, normal timeline. Um, where, the timeline where Serge dies. And then Homeworld is like the alternative timeline where Serge lives on. So it's kind of flip-flopped because we're in Serge's perspective. But yeah, we find out that the Sea of Eden is now called the Dead Sea, um, which is where. Uh, because of the storm, uh, Serge's father ends up, so he doesn't get to marble to consult the sage. He ends up. In this place called the Dead Sea. Um, and we don't know what happened to him. We just know that, oh, your father went out here, and we just know that you survived. Is kind of all we know from there. But we can't get there because we don't have a boat, and it turns out that Terminus. Is now occupied by poor, the poor military. Um, we meet this guy named Norris. He seems like a pretty cool guy. It turns out that Lynx is the reason why poor came to this archipelago, so Lynx told poor about. The frozen flame, and it's like, hey, the frozen flame is almighty powerful. And if you guys want to be like world conquerors, maybe you want the flame. Um, so that's why poor's here. They're, they're also after the flame.
Is Norris part of the poor military?
Yes, so Norris is part of the poor military. That's where he comes in.
Is Lynx also part of the poor military?
Yes, yeah, so. Yeah, they, and, and that's why, so because Lynx is kind of their consultant. It like, yeah, Lynx is kind of poor military's consultant. Of the El Nido Archipelago. Like Lynx is the guy feeding them the information about the fro- frozen flame and about the archipelago that let them occupy Terminus. So that's why, be, when you become Lynx, you're able to kind of infiltrate this whole place. Because you're in Lynx's body and he's buddy buddy with the military. If that makes sense. And it, it's also kind of a little confusing because you do have the two different timelines. There's subtle differences there. Um, but that's kind of all you really need to know. That's why, that's how you get in is you use Lynx's body. To get in and they're like, oh, yeah, Lynx. But then you're like, I'm not Lynx, and they're just cool with that, I guess. I don't know, because. Right? I guess because to them, they kind of were like.
Really you? Actually, he's not Lynx. Oh, okay.
Yeah, because I, I guess they kind of knew that Lynx was using them, but it was kind of a mutual, like, we're using each other. Um, and you also find out that in, um, in this timeline, the manor has actually been destroyed. Um, and you have to like go through the sewer in order to access it. Um, and it's actually, this is actually important because you find out in this timeline. General Viper and the dragoons and Lynx and Harley and all of them are made an expedition to the Dead Sea. And they never came back. So, the same as, as, as Wazuki, or and same as Miguel, where we're just like, hey, these guys went over to this place and they never came back, like, what happened? Um, so that's why Norris kind of joins your party, because he's all like, I'm actually wanting to know what's up, because. Like, we were, you know, working with them, but then, you know, or we, we came here to, to find this stuff out, but these guys are gone. And we want to know why they're gone, like, what happened to them? If that makes.
Beginning, at the very, very beginning of the game, like. On Homeworld, and Lena's like, I want Komodo scale necklaces. All this stuff's already happened, right? Viper Manor is already destroyed.
Yes, all this, yeah, because you're.
The dragoons are all, all gone.
Yeah, and that's why, because like you can't access the, um. Oh, what's it called? Fossil Valley. Yeah, that's, that's kind of why the game cuts you off at fossil valley, like you have to go to lizard rock, because. Theoretically, if you were allowed through this pass and got to Terminus, yeah, it would have been occupied.
You, it would already, it's already occupied, okay.
Yeah, and the map actually zooms into just this section, right? When you're playing that area. Because you'd notice, um, so this is actually another world's, um, version of the. I sh- I should have actually labeled this appropriately, because yeah, you can notice whether or not this is another world or homeworld based on like. Literally, the, eh, the Viper Manor is in ruins on this map. The color of the Hydra Marshes is different, depending on whether it's dead or not, things like that. There's actually a lot of subtle differences on the maps. Yeah, so you know that this is another world's Viper Manor because, um. Like Viper Manor is actually there. But yes, you are correct. If we were to actually get through there, this would have already been occupied. And like the ma- and that's why, like, if you were to actually explore this area, like, the, you know, the manor where you get the profiteer's purse. Is actually like this small little home, and that's where Van and Go live. Um, there's all di- there's a bunch of difference like that, because yeah, like base, I don't remember the exact year the manor like got. Turned into rubble, but that's when poor kind of moved in, because they're like, oh, hey, the dragoons are gone, like, we can take over this place. So that's the normal of Serge's worlds, or of, um, yeah, of Serge's world. Uh, or no, anyway, I keep, I keep mixing up. This is why I have the colors here, because I knew I was gonna mix that up. Yeah, I think that's everything on this slide. I'm pretty sure.
Also, Radius joins us for some reason.
Yeah, also. Um, well, I mean, the kind of the reason is, i- it's the same kind of reasons, where it's just like, he also, because he, it turns, you do kind of learn again that he. Was a dragoon at one point, so he, he is kind of related in all of this. Although in, in another world, he's a hermit instead of, uh. Uh, basically, there's an incident involving this guy named Garai, and. Kind of what happens based on the ti- which timeline you're on determines whether he is a shutout or, you know, tries to. Help out the village and be a, you know. A great guy that way. Anyway, I'm pretty sure that's everything. Oh, that like waked out. Anyway, um. Yeah, so you do that, and we're all like, hey, let's, we need to get to the Dead Sea. And it turns out it's all closed off, like, there's literally no way into the Dead Sea. Um, if we go back to the map. Over here, yeah, so this is, this is kind of the dead, well. Pretend like this is the Dead Sea, and it's all closed off. Um, this, pretend like that's not there yet. Uh, it's also clo- the, the version we're at in the story right now, this is closed off. There's no way in. And we know that, oh, um, well, Marbule knows the way in. There's like this song that you can, you know, there, there. The sage there knows of a way to access this area. Um, so we need to talk to the sage. Um, unfortunately. This, the El Nido Archipelago is racist towards demi-human beings, and, and that Marbule is like the island for demi-humans. Um, because we push them out of everywhere else, because you know, that's what happens with colonization. Um, so we know that, uh, because of racism, Marbule kind of gets forced out and ends up on. The SS Zalbes. So we, we just know that the sage is on this boat, and it's this fancy cruise boat in this version of the world. Instead of being a ghost ship. Um, Fargo decides to run it as a cruise ship. And there's a whole side storyline that's not really relevant, where, you know, he. Riggs the, the gambling area and steals your boat from you and, or I guess wins the boat from you. Um, and you have to become kitty cats in order to get your, you to, you know. Fix, you know, rig the rigging machine so it doesn't work anymore and get your boat back, and it's great. Oh, and this is Marbule down here, because I wanted to make sure I had a picture of it. Um, so you do that, you get your boat back. He, that gets you access to like the back area of the boat where the demi-humans kind of live. Um, and you are able to talk to the sage and convince him to. Tell you how to get into this area. Uh, also, at the same time, you kind of find out, oh, there's this, Sage also knows about this song. And it to, that helped save the demi-humans. It's this whole fun little side story to, basically, to help the demi-humans out. It turns out this mermaid is sister to the wife of Fargo, who is dead. And this guy named Nicky, who you could, you can choose, the, so there is like a canon. Order, it's like you get all these choices in the game, but people use the cutscenes that happen on the load screen of the game. To determine the canon thing, so, so the canon theory is that you follow Nicky into the manor, like Nicky's the reason you get into the manor. And it turns out Nicky is Fargo and this mermaid's, uh. Son, basically. Um, so he's like half-half human demi-human. Anyway, we'll get back to that later. Um, yeah, so the sage gives you, uh, entrance into this place. But it turns out, so the, the ring around this coral around the Dead Sea. Um, there's this one entrance that the sage gave you access to, but there's this sword in the way called the Massamune. That's blocking your path. Um, and you can't get in, and it turns out that Lynx. Stuck this sword here in order to stop anyone from following Lynx and the dragoons. Behind, from behind them and, you know, from interfering and all that stuff, yada, yada. And the Massamune is actually another story element from Chrono Trigger. Um, and it's actually kind of, this, so there's this, uh. There's two separate entities called Masa and Muney, and they combine to make the Masa Muney, the sword, is kind of. Ultimately what it comes down to, and it's kind of a, they're kind of good guys in the Chrono Trigger game, which is why it's kind of confusing why they became bad guys. Um, this game explains it by the fact that this sword was actively for thousands of years being used to like slaughter people. So the theory is, is that it just eventually became super corrupt. So, yeah, so we need to basically. Uh, destroy or nullify this sword in order to access this Dead Sea area to get our bo- to try and get our bodies back. And go after Lynx with our body. Um, in order to do that, we need the sword called the Einlancer, um, is kind of the counterbalance sword. And the Einlancer is actually of Dragonian descent. Which is kind, so it's got like dragon powers, basically, that would be able to counteract this Einlancer. But it turns out. The, the Einlancer, um, was last seen from Garai. And then this is where Radius finally tells us that, oh, yeah, so Garai and I were dragoons way back when. And Garai had the Einlancer, but then we discovered the Massamune sword. Um, and it turns out when you use that sword, it kind of just possesses you and makes you do evil things, like kill your friends. Um, and it turns out that's what Ra- that's what happened to Radius. Um, he was very jealous of Garai and ended up stabbing him to death.
So the reason we're going to the Dead Sea in Homeworld is because. That's our only lead that we got from Serge's mom about what it is, because we can't go back to another world. We're trying to get back to another world.
Yeah, and it, it's actually Radius that I think, if I remember right, it's, it's, oh, no, 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 never mind, never mind. Yeah, no, it is Radius, Radius that initially tells us about that. And that's what prompts. Yeah, because we, because we went to, we went. We basically went to mom because we didn't know what else to do, because, you know, what do we do? And then that's when Radius comes in and, and gives us the lead about the Dead Sea. And that's what prompts. Margot to tell us the whole story about, oh, yeah, the Dead Sea, and that actually happens to be the place that, like, that's why you're alive, how about? Um, and we know at this point that us being alive is a big deal, right? Like, we know that us being alive. You know, there, there's something wrong about that, because we're not alive in the alternate world. Um, and yeah, so that, that's our lead. We also know that, that's kind of where, um. Like theoretically, that's the area where Serge or Lynx went to. Um, we also know that this is where the frozen flame actually is. Um, so when we went to.
Not in Homeworld.
So technically, they're in, the frozen flame is in both worlds, and there's like a whole timeline. Reason, so, so theo- you can theoretically think that there, like, everything has a duplicate in each world, and Serge is kind of the main. Exception to that. Um, so the frozen flame does exist in both versions. Um, and I'll, I'll actually get to that when we, when we actually get to the Dead Sea slide, I can explain that a little bit further. Um, unless, well, I guess we can go there now. I mean, did, eh, does everything about the Massamune make sense storyline-wise? Cool. So, yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll go ahead. Yeah, basically, so we, we have to fight Radius's, you know, this, the ghost of Garai. This is his tomb right here. At the Isle of the Damned to get this sword to counter them.
He's a big jerk. He wrecked, he wrecked me pretty good.
Yeah, he's, he's a pretty hard boss, and rightfully so, like, he should be. Um, yeah, so we do that, and we're able to access the Dead Sea. And this is kind of the, a big turn, this is kind of the first time we kind of get. All of the exposition that gets into the deeper storyline of Chrono Cross. Oh, I just realized I didn't have my chat up, in case, if anyone else is asking questions, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Nope, no question.
Um, yeah, so. Um, the Dead Sea. Um, so you get it, you, so you enter the Dead Sea. Um, it, eh, it's kind of this whole frozen area here that you end up having to journey through. You find out that the ruins in this Dead Sea are actually from the future. Um, but we don't really learn more than that at this point, like, why and how that's, that's possible. Um, but yeah, you can see here, it's very futuristic looking. Um, eventually kind of get to the end, and we see the ghosts of like everyone that was missing, so. It's all the dragoons, General Viper, we see Harley and Lynx.
I only found that out last night. When I got there, I'm like, oh, it's the dragoons ghost. I thought it was like, just, I thought it was like the people from around, uh, from Chrono Trigger ghosts.
Yeah, I know, so this.
I didn't realize it was Chrono Cross people ghosts.
I'm glad, I'm glad you got there. But yeah, so this, this is why you find out, this is where you find out their future. So it turns out they did die coming here, essentially. Um, and that's why these are kind of just. Like, the, these aren't actually their ghosts, it's just kind of a, like, projection of them dying, basically. Um, that's a lovely thought. But yeah, theoretically, like Harley and Lynx also died in this timeline as well, because like they're there, right? So that, that's always an interesting thing I like to, that people can bring up and can spark like a whole long conversation about. Is the fact that like they also, yeah, so in this case, they also don't really have an alternate timeline. This is where you learn about, oh, go back, go back, go back. This is where you learn about Lavos, um, is mentioned at this point in the game, finally. And you learn, and then you, you kind of learn about, uh, because you meet Miguel in this. So there's this area called, um, Nadia's Bell. And this is also kind of a recreation of, um, this, uh, Bell is kind of where the game, like, uh, starts and ends. In Chrono Trigger. Um, this is where you kind of discover time travel is like in an area just off to the side of this bell. Um, and it's actually, it actually got recreated. There's, it's, it's a really fun timeline in Chrono Trigger. If you ever get the chance to, uh. Explore that. But yes, this is where, oh, hold on, Ringo just got a call, so I'm gonna wait for him to step out. It must actually be a real phone call, because he's, he's leaving, anyway. Uh, yeah, so we meet Miguel here. Um, oh, I forgot to do like a thing of Miguel. Um, we also kind of see these phantom images, and it turns out it's, you know, Chrono and the gang there. Um, and there, turns out that these like vision, like, so it's not actually their ghosts, again, like, they're, we don't really encounter actual ghosts in this game. They're all usually just. Projections of alternate futures or alternate timelines. Um, so we find out that the Dead Sea is this. Uh, basically, the graveyard of timelines that didn't happen. And kind of a big question at the end of Chrono Trigger is, so you save the world from Lavos. Um, but that means that all of these, like they, but that was in the year, like nineteen ninety-nine, is when like the Lavos apocalypse happens that they travel to. And they stop Lavos at that point in time, which means anything that happened after that point of time, like ceases to exist, right? Because they created a new timeline. Um, and all of that basically ends up here at the Dead Sea and like is perpetually frozen in time forever. Uh, and well, I have, I have a timeline at the very end that kind of gets more into this, if you actually kind of want to get into the. Uh, like nitty-gritty details of what that actually means. Uh, but for the purposes of the actual Chrono Cross storyline, we don't really have to get into that deep. We just, just know that that's what this is. Um, that's kind of what ended up killing these guys, because. Um, that's kind of what ended up killing these guys because Fate, uh, we learn about this thing called Fate. That's this kind of supercomputer and is controlling everybody in El Nido, so like El Nido is, um. Basically under this supercomputer's thumb, and Fate is literally able to manipulate anything that happens in El Nido on the original timeline. Um, and Fate basically killed all these people because Fate didn't want anyone to access the Frozen Flame that is here. Um, and it turns out that when we get here, Miguel's kind of this like. Placeholder, like Fate kind of just uses Miguel as this placeholder to like oversee this area. Um, but once we get there, Fate is like, oh no, we don't want Serge to access the Frozen Flame right now, so. I would rather destroy this whole area, um, than let them access the Frozen Flame. So that, that's probably where you thought the Frozen Flame didn't exist here, um, because at this point in the game is when the Frozen Flame gets destroyed. Essentially, um, which I have in the next slides, that's what, that's what happens, so. So we end up beating Miguel up, or we end up destroying Miguel because that was the only way to try and access the flame, but by doing so. Fate destroys this whole area, it's this whole beautiful cutscene, um, in an attempt to kill us and stop us from getting the flame. But then the dragons come in and save us, and the dragons all like. Yeah, so, uh, by the way, if you want to, uh. Um, like, in the other dimension, i- is where you can ax- or, or sorry, let me start over. So because the Dead Sea got destroyed here, we need to go back to the other dimension to try and access it there. Is kind of what it comes down to, cause we also know that that, again, where Hot Topic Lynx ends up. Is in that other version of the Dead Sea. So that's what they do, so they save us, um, and in doing so, that lets us be, uh, able to. Go back to cross dimensions again, um, we're able to do that again. Um, but it turns out that, um, as soon as, uh, because Viper got stabbed in this timeline. That finally allowed the poor military to infiltrate. Like they tried to do in the other timeline, um, so we need to, and that's, we kind of find that out, so Karsh and them learn that, oh hey. Um, you know, Serge stabbed the general and we want to save them, that's, here's everything all destroyed. Um, so they're kind of actually on our side now, because it's like, hey, we, you know, Serge did this thing, we're trying to go after them. We know that Lynx isn't, uh, they, they also know because General Viper was there to see it. That the body switch happened, so that's why they're on our side. Um, so we need to go in and infiltrate the manor to, cause Ri- um, Riddle's under interrogation by the poor military. Um, they're really not good people in this timeline, um, so we do that. Um, this whole window crash, I, I, you've probably heard PH talk about this a lot, but this whole window crash is actually like an homage to a scene that happens in Chrono Trigger. Um, we meet this cool little cyborg dude, we stampede the whole place, uh, and that's what happens at Viper Manor. Um, I think that's everything important at that point, uh, let me think.
Why are they interrogating Riddle?
Um, so, because they want to know what happened, they want to know, again, they're after the Frozen Flame as well. Um, so they want to know where the, the general is, they want to know where the dragoons are, they want to know. And, and in so doing, discover where the Frozen Flame is so that they can like conquer the world or whatever it is. Um, and Riddle's kind of the only person that was at the manor, that was left at the manor to, because again, the, the other dragoons were over here at Fort Dragonia. Um, and that's when, that's when Por invaded the manor, cause they're like, hey, nobody's home, let's invade the manor, but Riddle was still home. So they're just trying to get information from Riddle, if that makes sense. Yeah, I think that's everything. Let me think. I think that's everything, I think we're good to go. Um, also at the same time, so after we get through that fiasco, um. We end up at the hideout, um. And this is where you discover that kid is alive, um, but she's after Lynx. So it, basically, she's still sided with Hot Topic Serge. And we're very, very confused, like, why that is, um, and they're after us, but we don't want to fight her. And Fargo saves the day, he comes in with Park, with, uh, Polly and swoops in and rescues us. Um, but we reminisce about Kid, there's that whole scene. Um, where you see Kid kind of, you know, she, her back's turned and then she turns around and looks at us and offers her hand. Uh, and that scene's actually pretty relevant, like, he's actually kind of, Serge is actually flashing back to that scene. Um, but we never actually see that scene in the game, right? Um, and I'll explain that a little bit later on, um. But yeah, so we know, we're like, hey, this kid, it's, Kid is alive, but it seems like she kind of forgot everything that happened at Fort Dragonia. Because she's still with Serge. Anyways, we do that, um, the dragoons join our party, Fargo, Fargo joins our party, cause you know, he's the one that saved us. Harley ends up leaving the party, but not before, um, so the same, so this is the same area as, um. So this is, those are the pearly gates, so this is called, uh, uh, I can't remember. What this area was called, but anyway, so this is the, another world's version of that area is the pearly gates. And it's also cu- it's literally cut off from us, there's no, it, it's not like there's a sword blocking us, we literally like can't get past this area. And Harl's like, um, I'll give you a couple hints to get through this. Um, you need, in order to get through this, you need the blessing of the dragons, um, to get through. But we also know that we're not able to get through because we are not search. Cause we also know that Serge, for some reason, Serge in his body is able to just access this place. And that's why the body swap happened, was because Lynx needed Serge's body to get into this area. Um, which was the Dead Sea and the other area. Um, so we also not only need the, the dragon's blessing, but we also need a way to get our body back to get through here. Um, and that's when Harley leaves our party. Yeah, so at this point, um, I'll finish, like, there's a side quest that you can finish off. Um, because in order to access one of the dragons, um, we need to. Basically, like liberate Marvel, in order to do that, we can, needed, that we were able to convince the sage to teach Nikki. Um, whoops, the song, um, which can be sung in that, um, will. Liberate Marvel, basically, the, the dragon god is asleep. And his power is kind of making these creatures like, um, roam around Marvel. And anyways, that's Nikki, and that's, Nikki kind of helps out with that storyline. Oh, oh yeah, so also, um, Marcy is also Fargo's daughter, by the way. I don't know if that ever was communicated to you, but that's a thing as well.
Marcy?
Yeah, so Marcy and Nikki are like, I can't remember if they're half siblings or if they're, if she's, I don't think, I think only Nikki is the, the half-human. But I, I don't actually remember the exact relationship with that, um, but anyway, so, so we do this whole storyline just so that we can wake up the. Um, black dragon that's at Marvel, um, to get his blessing. You also can completely skip all of this and just the dragon sleeping and you just like. Pick up the blessing that's lying next to him, that happens. But yeah, that's that storyline, um, so yeah, we go around, get all their blessings, these are all the areas you go to. Um, the most interesting area is the, to, uh, just want to mention, cause I think you, you for sure would have missed this, just skipping through with the speedrun. Um, is there's a place called Gaia's Naval? And you literally can't, uh, get to it by boat. Um, yeah, cause that's, that's it over here, it's basically this whole, like, plateau type island that you cannot get to. Um, the only way you can get to it is, oh, I forgot what slide you were, perfect, um, you, there's these. Bebas that are here and they have a whistle that summons the Wingapeed, which I have on a different slide, and that gets you here. And you meet this other chick here, um. Called Leah, um, and she helps you beat that dragon. But you kind of learn more about the, the Dragonians here, um, and, and the people of, of Dragonia. Uh, and the reptites in general, or it feels like there's like reptile type creatures here, and then that's relevant to like a super. Like, another, like, what, what year is it, like?
Sixty-five million B.C.
No, 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 the, the prehistoric era.
Yeah, sixty-five million B.C.
Oh, that is, so with Ayla, that's sixty-five, that's right, you're right, you're right, cause that's when Lavos hits the ground, anyway. Yeah, so there are, there are like caveman type people in sixty-five million B.C. And it is canon, I'm pretty sure it's canon that this is the daughter of, of Ayla, who's one of the main characters in Chrono Trigger. Uh, but it's not, I think it's only canon because of like the Ultimis, uh, the Ult-, uh, what's the guide called, that's, anyway. Uh, or like in inter- character interview, or creator interviews, um, yeah, we already discussed all of these other ones. Uh, yes, you do the gods, you get their blessing. Another side quest that you can finish during this time, actually, in, in the speedrun, we do this like way, 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 way earlier. But essentially what happens is after, after you, um, liberate the Viper Manor from Por. Um, there's this whole nother secret room, and there's like this special valuable item that you want, and it turns out Salt and Pepper. Stole that item and is like, oh hey, Karsh, you're looking for this item, well, if you want it, you're gonna have to find us at, you know, you're gonna have to. Confront us at, uh, the Isle of the Damned, and we do so, and it turns out that Salt and Pepper think that Karsh. Um, killed Dario. Um, and again, we, the Karsh that's in our party is the, um. Homeworld, or the, all, another world car, like, they're, they're, they're opposite Karshs. But basically what it comes down to is, um, there's a whole unrequ- unrequited love between Riddle, Viper, General Viper's daughter. And these two, um, dragoon divas. Um, and Dario and Riddle get married and Karsh had unrequited love for her. So they kind of suspected that, uh, Karsh killed Dario in, out of jealousy. Is that storyline, well, it turns out, and, and it's so dumb, because like, it's, the island's not labeled, it's this little island right here, I don't know. Just so you know, whenever you get there, it's, it's called the Forbidden Isle, and it has like the smoke coming out of it, which is why you know, there's like this house here. Oh, whoops, that's too far. And when you get on it, um, it turns out that this is where Dario ended up on this, uh, in this world. Um, so he was not killed, um, but he lost his memories, and so by coming here as Riddle. Um, who, you know, is his lover, you kind of like shocked him into remembering everything all over again. And the Massamune appears out of nowhere with the spirit of Garai, um, and it turns out that. We didn't actually get rid of the sword, we just made the sword return to its original. Um, like its previous owner, it's like the wand of, uh, what's the Harry Potter wand called? The Elder Wand, yeah, it's kind of like the Elder Wand, I guess, or like the sword like returns to its previous owner. So we have to, we end up, end up having to beat him up, um, which is great, we end up saving him and the sword ends up being purified. I guess, they don't really explain why that ha- like, like, we save Garai by beating him up and the sword. Basically, basically, the, the two spirits of Masa and Muney, oh yeah, there's the third spirit, what's its name? Ah, I can't remember her name, but we basically, oh, because of the Ein- anyway, um. Were able to reunite the two spirits with this third spirit. And that makes them be like, oh wait, we were being evil this whole time, that's bad, let's be good guys again, and so Serge gets to have this great sword. And that's why you do this, that's why you do this whole thing in the speedrun, is because this is like the best sword in the game, basically, and. It's, there's actually like rainbow weapons you can forge too, but that's too complicated for speedruns, so this is, for all intents and purposes, the best sword in the game. Um, and it helps the dragon god rush a lot if you have that sword. Uh, so that's that storyline, um, I'm pretty sure I covered everything there. Um, I think, anyway, the other thing you kind of, um. Learn about is, um, when you, when we went back to Termina, the dragoons like joined our party. Um, they ended up giving us the shattered tier that was in this room. Um, which is important, because when we go back to the dragon shine, um, they're like, oh hey, that's a piece of the dragon's tier, um. You know, that's gonna be helpful, and she ends up joining your party and is like, hey, let's go back to Fort Dragonia. Um, and get these two pieces of this tiers, um, so we basically end up with two shattered tiers, one from each dimension. And we're able to put them back together at Fort Dragonia to get our body back. Um, and it's good times, um, but this is the point of the game where it kind of does a little exposition. Dump on you, so it turns out the, the wall in this room actually like tells you the history of the world. And it's, it's the whole like evolution theory, like, oh hey, like, there's a comet that hit the floor, or hit, hit the planet, and, you know, the. That made dinosaurs go extinct and humans became super smart, um, and it turns out that comet is Lavos. Um, and at this point, so we don't actually learn a lot of what I'm about to say till later, but this is kind of the best time to mention it. Um, so in Chrono Trigger, this, so this is sixty-five million B.C. Um, and in Chrono Trigger, there are humans, but they're super primitive, and there's this other race called reptites. Um, and it turns out that if Lavos had never landed on the planet. Humans would have died out, and reptites would have eventually evolved into like a superior race called Dragonians. And that's going to be relevant a little later on, um, but that's kind of what this wall is telling us is, uh. Or actually, the wall doesn't tell us that, the Terra Tower tells us that later, but, but the wall kind of gives us the. Like precursor to that, um, by talking about this evolution with, with Lavos. Uh, I think that's everything on this slide.
So why did? Sir, why was Serge able to get his body back?
Um, so we were able, so, so what, what swapped our bodies was the dragon's tier. Um, but it shattered when it swapped our bodies, um, but because we were able to get the other half. As Lynx, um, we were able to put the two halves together and that, so that, that's what the dragon, the, oh, no, 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 no. I'm confusing things, never mind, so this is, this is the, this is this world's, um. Version of the tier, and by bringing it back here, we were able to, um. Get our body back, so basically, one version of the tier swapped our bodies and shattered. And then we use the other world's version of the tier to get our body back, if that makes sense.
How did, how do we get the other world's version, when did we get that?
Um, that was back when, um, hold on. That's that world. Oh, um. Oh, I'm trying to remember, now I'm like confusing myself. Hold on, I actually, I haven't pulled up my notes, I, I have a couple notes on this, cause I knew there's gonna be some things I was gonna forget. Uh, let me, let me see if I can find this. Oh, 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 so the relics, so the, the relics that the dragons gave you, um, helped us. Uh, uh, basically, it's the dragons, so that, that's part of why we had to get the blessings of the dragons. Because that's what allowed us to access, um. The, like, this, the homeworld's dimension of the dragon's tier. Um, and that's, so we take that and then go to Fort Dragonia and, and do like the body switching thing. That's what it was, it, yes, so, so that, that.
Where, where was Homeworld's dragon tier?
Um, so I think the sig- so, I could be wrong, but I'm pretty sure it was the act of, um. Oh, I'm screwing up the story, what am I getting wrong, squirtle? I don't know when you said that, cause I, I can't have. Okay, I can't have, uh.
When you, when you, when you had to pull up your notes.
Okay, yeah, cause I, I can't pull up like the, the slide and like have my, um, the OBS up. But I was able to have OBS up, cause I, I clicked away to look at my notes, um. Because let me, let me check one other place. Right, okay, so it was at the shrine, that's right. Um and that, that's why, oh, the sea, and that's why I had that slide there. That's why I put this here. Um because we showed her. Um yeah, so it's, the text box is actually covering it up, but there's like this little pillar thing that's over here that this whole half of the map of the. Um screen is being covered right now, but they have the tier. Um so the, so we were able to, so by showing them the alternate worlds version of the tier. That's what spawned them, that that's what made them be like, wait, how do you have the tier? Cuz we have the tier right here and that's what gets her to join your party. Um so that's how you get the tier. I, that's why I knew, I knew that's why, I'm like, there's a reason I put this slide here with her joining your party and that's the reason why. Um so after you get the dragon's blessings, that helps you um, you also need to go to this shrine. Um and that, that's why they like don't let you in, right? Cuz like, they're like, only special people can let you in. Um but when you get the the shattered tier from Karsh and the other people by liberating the manor. Um they they give you their shattered tier and you're able to show it to this world's version of of that. So yeah, they have the tier. In their shrine this whole time and they give it to you and she's all like, oh yeah, so you need to go to the shrine and I'll come with you. So you can get your body back. So that's what, that's the answer. That's right. I knew, I knew there's a reason I put that slide there. There's, it is relevant to the plot. Um yeah, so I think that answers everything about this section of the story. Um and this, I'll get more into this later. Um. But yeah, and 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 in fact, this is kind of like, this is kind of my last like story slide because. Yeah, there's ho- two whole sections that happened, but they're actually kind of related to each other. Um so yeah, we get the tier, we get our body back and by getting our body back, that lets us access Chronopolis. Um for, in the Sea of Eden. Um. And that's what it looked like before and by going to all of the islands of the past, present and future and unlocks Chronopolis. Um, hold on, let me. Go back to my notes and find this spot on this cuz I'm definitely gonna, I'm definitely gonna wanna do this. Um. Oh yeah, so I did, I did talk about how like that there is theoretically a timeline. Where Lava, the the big baddie Lavos never dropped and that's how the reptiles and Dragonians existed, right? I think I said that. Um.
Not explicitly, but you did know.
Okay, yeah, so, so yes, there's these reptiles that exist in Chrono Trigger. Um and they're, they're really just kind of smart reptiles. Um but it turns out that it had Lavos not. Um landed on the planet, humans actually would have basically been killed out by the reptiles, like the reptiles would have won. And eventually, well, they would have evolved into super beings called Dragonians. So Dragoni- we know that. We're, we're kind of noticing in the El Nido Triangle, which is, you know, the land where the dragons sleep. Um we're getting these hints of ruins of these Dragonians, kind of. Is kind of a big deal and and we don't really learn about that till later, but it's easier to mention it now. Um but yeah, so we get to Chronopolis. Um and it turns out that um. Chronopolis is also like from the future. But also we learn that Chronopolis has like been here for thou- hundreds of thousands of years, or not, tens of thousands of years. Um so it's this weird like contradiction where you're like, okay, this is a futurist, like, like this, this city has a futuristic. Technology to it and yet there's proof that this has been here for a very long time, as if it's from the past. Um and we kind of learn through here, this is, this is where the whole supercomputer stuff gets solidified. Um like it turns out that save points are literally like fate, like is rewriting your memory. And like you're, it's this whole weird like, I, I, the fact that they even made save points like a canon thing in this game is so weird to me. Um that's basically fate like tampering with everyone on the El Nido Triangle. Um so we learn that Chronopolis. There, there was this big huge like time crash that happened. Um where um and then also we learn with after, after Chronopolis with the Terra Tower, we also learned that. Both Chronopolis and Terra Tower are kind of distant futuristic. Like super being type cities that existed on different timelines in the future. And through the time crash, they both got sent way back into the past. Um. And Chronopolis is kind of the human version to be sent back to the past and Terra Tower is the. Dragonian city that got sent into the past as a response. Um and it turns out that fate is um. Uh was, uh oh, that's right, that's why I have this here. So there's this guy named Balthazar. Um who turns out to be the prophet dude that we've been talking to throughout the entire game. And he's also from the future, but he is actually from the Kingdom of Zeal that I referred to at the beginning of the the presentation. Um and he, he's kind of got this whole scheme to like basically. Find Scala who disappeared, but also has a scheme to like help save the planet. Um because uh the su- supercomputer. Uh and I'll, I'm not gonna get too much into this till I have the timeline slide because it gets really confusing. Um but basically, the supercomputer only exists in the timeline that Lavos got saved. And um but because it was thrown back into the past. Um it wanted to like basically preserve the timeline. And so El Nido as an archipelago is kind of like sealed off and so fate was kind of going out of its way to make sure that. Nobody in the archipelago would is, would be able to leave and like, you know, cause like time loops and stuff, right? Um and and fate is also able to directly intervene in everyone that lives here. So like. If if you get it, you know, get in. If, yeah, I don't know, if you like learn the truth or something, fate would then go into your brain through using the save points basically and like. Erase your memory from any of that from happening. But. Because of the, and this is, this is why I referred to that electric storm that Wazuki. Was try- uh was traveling in to save Serge. Um and this is why I put quick, the mods are asleep. Because it turns out that when um, when this electric storm happened and. Um Serge's dad landed on this island. Um it made it so fate. Was down for ten minutes, like, like the, those, basically the servers were down for ten minutes. And fate was not able to do anything for those ten minutes. And the frozen flame. It turns out, um is, so this is actually the frozen flame in here, in inside this whole bubble that we get to in Chronopolis. That's the frozen flame. And fate was used, that, the frozen flame was how fate was able to manipulate everyone on the El Nido. Archipelago, like that's what was giving fate its power. Um and. Oh, I lost my train of thought for a second there. Um. What was I getting at?
You're talking about fate versus the dragon god? I think you were comparing those two in the cities.
Well, right, um well, still, I'm, I'm still like storyline wise, cuz like when you, when you get here, Serge, you're discovering all of this. Yeah, 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 yeah. Um that's right, that's right. Yeah, so, so fate was using the frozen flame. And when the servers went down, the frozen flame kind of was able to think for itself. Um and because Serge was there, the fro- the frozen flame was like, hey Serge, I choose you. And basically like. Kind of bonded with Serge a little bit. Um. And that made it so that fate was no longer able to directly control the flame anymore. Um because Balthazar and Luca um in earlier iterations of this supercomputer. They kind of had a hand in like the earlier iterations of this computer and. Coded this thing called the uh, what was it? The Prometheus Index, I think is what it was called. And this index made it so that. Um it was basically a kill switch, so that it, you could use the Prometheus Index to shut down fate as a computer. And if fate ever discovered this code inside of it, like the code itself would literally make it so that fate would forget about it. Um but they did, when they went down and the flame connected with Serge. That made it so fate lost access to the flame and Serge became the arbiter, the, the new arbiter person in charge. And that's why, uh and you also learned that Lynx is like a human incarnation of fate. Um and that's why fate wanted Serge's body because fate, in order to get access to the frozen flame again. Because Serge bonded with the flame, fate needed Serge's body to get that access back. Um because it also knew that if it didn't get that access back, that this Prometheus circuit would be able to defeat fate. And that's ultimately what we do. So we do the fate fight. We basically. Uh by, by killing fate, we use the circuit to override fate and that destroys the fate supercomputer. Um does that all make sense up to now? It kinda gets a little confusing. Um.
Uh how does Luca fit into this?
Um so Luca was the one to put this code into the computer. Um and it's actually kind of um.
So, so did Luca work on the very first version of fate?
Yes, kind of. So and and it's also canon that there's this, there's another character called Robo. And it's kind of canon that Robo is like the original code, like, like the, what, what's the, what's the like base? Yeah, so Robo turns out to be the kernel that eventually becomes the supercomputer of Chronopolis in the future. That also then gets sent back to the past cuz you also have to remember that um. There's like thousands of years, like this computer has existed for a very, very long time. Um if, yeah, so that, that's kind of how that time loop works. Um is, yeah, so the, so the people of Chronopolis were kind of. So they're, they kind of also fell in the same trap as the Kingdom of Zeal where they're trying to. Um but instead of trying to mess with Lavos specifically, they're, they're more specifically trying to mess with the frozen flame. Um which I guess, that's actually the same thing cuz the, the frozen flame, it turns out, is like a piece of Lavos ultimately. Um is kind of what that ends up being. Um. But yeah, so they're kind of toying around with the supercomputer and and they're the ones that develop it and turn it into this whole huge thing. But Luca kind of was the originator of that. Uh because she, so one thing that they get to with Chrono Trigger is these things called time eggs. Um so once, cuz Luca kinda, Luca's the character that accidentally discovers time traveling in Chrono Trigger. Um and then she kind of develops that into time eggs, I believe. Um. Oh, you're right, I should pull, I should pull chat up on my phone. That's a good idea. You probably said that a long time ago. Um anyway, um yes, so yeah, so she, so it's the time eggs that they're kind of using. To be able to do all of this as well. And and Luca kind of was the tech genius that started all of that. Um I know, you said that nearly twenty minutes ago. It's fine. Um I'm gonna do it now, actually, cuz then I can have these notes up at the same time. Um oh shoot, where, what slide am I on? Oh, that slide, okay. Um but yeah, so um and the dra- we find out when we kill fate. It turns out that that wasn't the thing that, I mean, so, so killing fate was still a, a big deal, like we had to do it because. Lynx and fate wanted us dead because we weren't supposed to exist and and by us existing, we foiled fate's plans. So fate was kind of already out to get us no matter what. Um so we were gonna have to use the Prometheus code to destroy fate. Um but we learn that fate really was like a good guy, like it seems like a bad thing that fate's like. Directly controlling all of us in this ar- archipelago, but by doing so, they were preventing the dragon god from. Uh killing all humanity. Um and like I said, so the dragon god kinda comes from. Terra Ta- uh so the dragon god is actually a man, not manmade, uh it's, it's, it's not. A natural, organic creature, like the dragon god was made by the Dragonians as kind of the ultimate like. Representation of each element and and was how they would control, like almost godlike control the planet, basically. Um and Terra Tower was the planet's way, um using the time crash, the planet. Threw back Terra Tower because the Dragonians um evolved with nature, whereas humans didn't, right? Humans are horrible creatures and we pollute the planet and all that, all the, all that bad stuff. Um so the planet took this timeline of Terra Tower through that. It back in the past during the time crash when Chronopolis had the time crash as a direct response. Um and it turns out the dragon god is out to kill humanity and fate um. Was a powerful enough supercomputer developed by Chronopolis. And was able to chop up the dragon god into six individual creatures. Um and actually split them up into two separate, i- into the two alternate timelines even to weaken it even more. Um and by releasing the dragon flame and defeating fate, we basically let the dragon god. That allowed the dragon god to merge once again and and you know, and the dragon god's like, grr, I'm gonna now beat humanity. So that's, that's the end of the game where we're like, oh, okay, so I guess we have to go and go back and actually get the frozen flame. Um oh, cuz that's what happened. So we didn't actually get the frozen flame when we beat fate because the dragon god came in and stole it from us. And Kid was also um, this is where we get into Kid. Um so Kid was also like, oh, I'm gonna release the flame. Um to, and that's what lets the dragon god uh be able to take it. And it also turns out that Harl was. A seventh dragon god. Um and it's, it's actually, she's not part of the original dragon god from Terra Tower. She was kind of the dragon god's like brainchild, I guess. I don't know, they, they developed Harl, Harl. During the ten minute, quick the, you know, electrostorm or quick the fate's asleep. Um so that, so not only did the frozen flame take advantage of trying to break free of fate by merging with Serge. The dragon gods were also like, oh, we can use this opportunity to create a humanoid entity to. Um manipulate things in our favor to free us. And that's kind of why Harley like joined our party. So she, her, her mission. Um she was actually kind of at odds with Lynx if you think about it, cuz if Lynx is a representation of fate, Harley is a representation of the dragon gods. Um and so they're both after the frozen flame, but for completely opposite reasons. Um the fate was just trying to regain access to the, the frozen flame. Whereas the dragon gods were trying to take advantages to destroy fate so that they can then steal the, the frozen flame. Um I think that explains everything about that whole fiasco. Um I don't know, do you have any questions about that?
Are you gonna get into how Kid fits in?
Yes, that'll be my next slide.
Okay.
Uh yeah, so with all that said, um. So it turns out, so yeah, so, so we go to Chronopolis, we beat fate, that spawns the dragon god. So we go to Terra Tower, we go through all the el- like literally we have to go through and fight a representation of each of the elements so many times. And like, it's so annoying in the speedrun. Uh but, so it turns out when we beat the dragon god. Um they, the dragon god also wasn't the big baddie. It turns out to be this thing called the Time Devourer. Um you know, and and in, and in typical RPG, RPG fashion, we learn about the actual. Boss of the game, even though like we didn't know anything about this, like we didn't know this thing even existed until the end of the game, right? Um so thi- so in this game, that's the Time Devourer. Um. So it turns out, and this is where the very beginning of, of the presentation started off. Um. Oh, oh, Balthazar makes the time egg, but Luca discovers the time travel independently. Okay, yeah, 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 you're right, you're right. Um but they're related. Thanks. This is why I wanted to hear Ringo because I knew you'd get the, the Chrono Trigger parts. Um but yeah, so Kid. Turns out to be Scala's daughter clone. It, like literally, that's the textbook game use is, is Kid is Scala's daughter clone. Um so when Scala was kind of poofed out of existence. Um she ended up um merging with Lavos essentially to create what is called the Time Devourer. And they're kind of off in this, uh there, there is an official canon name for this, but I, I don't remember what it's called. Um like, I don't know, Darkness Beyond Time or something, like Beyond Time. Yeah, Kingdom Hearts. Yeah, Kingdom Hearts. So, oh, nope. Exactly. Um, so that's, that's where the Time Devourer comes in is basically. There is a timeline where Lav- so, so, uh. Yeah, cause the, the apocalypse doesn't actually happen until nineteen ninety-nine AD on this whole timeline. But Lavos entered the planet in sixty-five million BC, right? So Lavos is just kind of chilling in this like limbo time zone this whole time. Um, and when this accident in the Kingdom of Zeals, um, poofs Scala out of existence. She ends up in the same place that the, that Lavos did. Um, so it's kind of thought that Lavos and Scala kind of merged into this Time Devourer. And she's, she was also kind of the one person at the Kingdom of Zeal that was all like. No, we need to help people. Let's stop these experiments. You know, like she, she was a good angel, right? And, but Lavos is like this devouring, you know, energy devouring entity. And so there's kind of, it's, it's kind of at odds with itself of, you know, you know, hey, we wanna help the planet. Oh, but we also wanna destroy the planet. Um, and Balthazar actually kind of knows this, so. Um, Balth- Balthazar turns out is actually the person pulling the strings behind all of this. So Balthazar wasn't working for fate or for Terra Tower or any of this. He was out to like help save Scala. Um, but he also knew that like. Saving Scala can be done in different ways because she merged with Lavos. Um, and you can end up with a future that's like destroys everything, or you can end up with a future where, you know, Scala gets to be herself again. And what kind of spawned this whole thing is while Scala's kind of trapped in this limbo. She actually hears surge's cry when he gets attacked. And is like, oh, I wanna save you. Like, what is this cry I'm hearing? I need to save this kid. Um, and that's kind of what causes the magnetic electric storm that, you know. That we talked about earlier. Um, and it also, what is what caused her? So she actually actively went out of her way. And I think the official text is like she traveled, you know, ten thousand years in time or something is what the epilogue says. To try and find surge. Um, and one method that she used to try and find him is she created a daughter clone. Sent her, uh, basically sent her to Luca and, and there's in the, the. DS version of Chrono Trigger, there's like a bunch of like cutscenes and at the very end of that cutscene in their attempt to make. Chronocross like more canon, there's this scene at the end where you see this baby with this amulet. And Luca discovers this baby and that turns out to be kid. And so kids basically Scala's kind of way to help manipulate time in her version. Um, ki- and it turns out so that, that whole cutscene that I talked about earlier with. You know, you, you zoom in on kid and she turns around and she reaches out her hand, like that is her saving search. Um, so Scala sends kid, um, so, so after this whole thing happens and you beat the game. Kid then tr- uses the time egg to travel back in the past to save surge. Um, and in, and that, that's the moment that kind of cr- created the dimensional split and. Cut off fate and all that stuff that we talked about earlier. Um, and that, that's why she's so special. And the amulet also kind of protects her. So, and there's lots of theories and I can't decide which one I like the best of like. How kid is actually like, how kid survives like getting stabbed to death. Um, because it, it is explained that the amulet kind of brings her. Um, so like if she's ever in danger, the amulet like kind of time travels her prior to that moment of danger. Um, which is kind of why her fu- memories are fuzzy. I think it's PH, no, it's not PH. Who is it that someone has a theory that they actually just have, it's like the, um. Prestige, the movie Prestige where like their theory is like literally like. They're just making it, they just make a whole new clone of kid is kind of that theory. I don't know. There, there's a lot of ways you can interpret it, but basically because she's the daughter co- clone of Scala and she was given this amulet. Um, that enables her to like not die ever, basically. And that, that's also what enables her to go back in time and save surge and do all that business. Um, but all that only happens based on, um, the Chronocross. Um, and we get the Chronocross because we take the two shattered tears. Oh yeah, cause when we, when surge got his body back, that ver- that world's version of the tier also shattered. And that gave us the tier of love and the tier of hate. And we go to this ancient Dragonian runes here to, um. We take those two tiers and it creates the Chronocross. And the Chronocross is kind of what Balthazar was kind of trying to manipulate because that's the only way. If, you know, with a special sequence that the game just doesn't wanna outright tell you, hey, this is how you get the good ending.
Five hundred times.
But tells you five hundred times, like.
Apparently even in the official strategy guys that says, we're not gonna say what it is, but the game tells you a lot.
Seriously. And it is pretty stupid. Like, I don't know. Anyway. Like, so that combined with the Chronocross is what allows the good, and that, that's why you have all the alternate endings with this game. Um, and that, that's why the speedrun is called the good ending. Because you need to use the Chronocross and the specific sec- or sorry, the chrono. No, it's the Chronocross. Yes. Yeah. So the chrono trigger, so surge is the chrono trigger. Well, I don't know if I explained this very well before, so the chron- so, so. Fate bonding or the frozen flame bonding with, with surge is what makes him the chrono trigger. Um, and by bonding with surge, he, that, that's what. Made surge overwrite the code and became the arbiter of fate. So those are actually two different things. Um, I don't know if that was explained very well. Like, I don't, I don't think the game explains that very well either. It took me a long time to figure out that those were like two distinct titles. Cause I kind of thought the Chrono Trigger was the arbiter fate thing, but it's not. The arbiter is what allows surge to override fate's code and destroy fate. The trigger is what allows surge to, um, bond with the frozen flame. And in by doing so, he's able to access and, and, uh. Access this beyond time realm and confront the Time Devourer essentially. Um, and then depending on how you confront the Time Devourer. Cause, cause the game at the end, like a lot of the texts you're button mashing through with the speedrun is like. What will you choose? Like how will you do this? And, and, and Harl even asks you that, like, will you choose the planet or will you choose me like? Um, from her perspective. And how you beat the Time Devourer determines the ending, you determines the future of your timelines, basically. So the good ending actually merges the two dimensions into one. And basically, a- and, and makes it so that Chrono Trigger still happens, like we still save the planet and everything's happy and bright. Uh, but there's a whole bunch of other endings. Like if you don't do that, if you don't use the Chronocross and you don't do the secretive. I- i- if you just try to brute force kill the Time Devourer, you, that, none of that happens. They end up staying separate and like, uh, you know, it's not as happy basically is what happens there. Yeah, I think that kind of covers everything. But yeah, the, the Chronocross is, is Balthazar. So that, that's where the prophet dude comes in. He's kind of the mastermind in, um. In making, making the Chronocross events happen so that we can save Scala. Um, and so that, that's kind of where, like, long story short, without getting into a whole other thread of discussion. Um, that's where, that's where the prophet from the library ties into all this. He, he wants to save Scala. And in order to save Scala, you, he has to make sure that. Um, when we confront the Time Devourer, good things happen. Um, it's like the TLDR of that. Um, I think that's basically everything.
You got a picture of links.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah. Cause, cause you find out, like, this is like the, the TLDR of who links is. Cause you find out in Chronopolis that, um, yeah, so links is fate. But how fate didn't just birth links, right? So fate actually took the panther demon that killed, um, surge. And, um, Wazuki, because when, um, when Wazuki went to save surge at the Dead Sea. Um, fate, when fate went back online after the ten minute downtime, fate was able to like corrupt Wazuki basically. And fate also wanted, and that, that's kind of where the panther attack comes in, cause apparently the panther attack. Was fate's attempt at trying to kill surge, like directly. So it's this whole time loop thing. Um, so that, that was fate trying to kill surge and cer- and kid saving surge from hap- from, from dying to the panther demon. And fate basically took Wazuki and, um, the panther demon soul and like combined them. Um, and eventually made links in order to have this humanoid person like. Be able to, you know, perform its evil bidding, basically. And links is also the dragon's tier plus surge is also kind of the bo- what caused the body swap with the. Good guy links is what happened there. So that's, that's kind of the, this image was me attempting to like. TLDR like links is literally surge's dad plus the panther demon and.
Made by fate.
Made by fate.
As a way to exert fate's will to try and kill surge.
That's everything. That, that's, that's it. You got it. Um, and yeah, I think I kind of already explained, yeah, so, so Harl was the seventh dragon. But I think the, she's officially like their offspring though. Like she wasn't a part of the original dragon god. Um, the dragon god created her. Again, it's the same, the same reason fate created links, but for on the dragon god's side. And there's actually this whole thing. So she, under all this makeup, theoretically, she actually looks exactly like kid. So the, the theory is because the dragon god was being held captive by fate. They both had access and, 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 uh, through the frozen flame, they both kind of had access to Scala's genome. And so they kind of, in order to make a human. The, the theory is they ended up using Scala's genotype to like create this humanoid that is Harley. So. And that, the whole, and that's the whole, like, they both love surge, love triangle kind of fits in. I guess the explanation is they're both, since they're both derived from Scala. They're kind of the same person except not. And I don't know a better way to explain that than what I just said. Yeah, the same reason, um, Scalia made kid, yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah. That's, that's, that's a good point, um. Um, so, so there's a fortune teller in terminal. Okay, I, I, I was trying to remember if you saw that or not, um, but you, one really fun thing.
You're like, this won't mean anything if you didn't play Chrono Trigger. And I'm like, me.
Yeah, so, well, I mean, so, so the fortune teller actually is a callback. So the, the bell picture that I showed earlier, um. There's a fortune teller at that festival where the bell is. Um, and it's, so it's designed to look exactly the same, but, but one cool, like. The speedrun doesn't let you get to explore this at all, but if you ever casually play the game. A really cool thing you get to do is you can talk to the fortune teller and the fortune teller will tell. The fortune of every playable character in the game. And it turns out that the fortune she gives for Harley is the same as sc- uh, as kid. And that's kind of the explanation of why is because if they're both kind, if the entity of both of them is based off of Scala, then their fortunes are kind of. The same, I guess. I don't know. Anyway. But yeah, so, and, and that's kind of where you get the fun little alternate endings because. Because you're kind of the direct link into determining the future of the entire universe and everything, like life, the universe and everything. Um, the game had a lot of fun in creating a lot of alternate endings. Like what if you beat, like you can literally go in and beat the Time Devourer at different points in the game once, once you get to new game plus. And when you beat the Time Devourer, like changes how endings, what endings happen. So like you can, you can literally in new game plus, like when you go to get the Komodo dragon scales. Like you can go to the beach and then like immediately kill the Time Devourer. Yeah, you can use, you can use it right there and then. Yep. And so there's an ending for that. And it's actually really funny. Like kid ends up like, anyway. There's, there's a lot of, I'm, I'm not gonna get into the, the alternate timelines. That's definitely for a d- I'm, I'm, I'm. It'd be fun to kind of do, do like a playthrough of all of the alternate endings. Or if you ever watch, um. The, oh, what was, when was it during the really, really longathon? They did a, um, they actually did an all characters run of the game. And part of hundred percenting the game is getting all, like all of the possible endings. So that's always a fun thing to do. But yeah, thanks for, thanks for bringing that up. I never know how to say your name, um, but I think it's Psykit, right? Or, or Psykit, Psykit. Uh, but thanks for bringing up the fortune teller. Cause that, that's always a fun little Easter egg that they put in there, um, for that. Uh, but yeah, I think that's everything, um. And if it's not, I also, um, just, just as a TLDR. So the, these are all, by, by the way, if, if you ever actually like really wanted to get into this. Um, there's this website called the Chrono compen- compo- blah, 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 what's the word? Compendium, um, and it's anything and everything chrono franchise. Like it, it has everything you could ever want to know about Chrono Trigger, Chronocross and Radical Dreamers. Um, and it's, it's kind of like I, it's actually been, I should have re- I should have gone back to that site actually over the last couple of weeks. And like reread stuff and I didn't, but like, but that's where I got these timelines from. And this is kind of just a visual of what I was explaining before. And like, I like this flowchart, cause it, it's like the TLDR of the whole thing. So it's, okay, sixty-five million BC. Does Lavos land? No. Okay. Then we have the reptile dimension. Does Lavos land? Yes. Okay. Well then. Um, and then this is kind of a more, um, drawn out version of, of this. This is the same thing. Uh, but if Lavos lands, then you have the timeline, the Chrono Trigger timeline, which is right here. And you've got the averted future that, um. The cast in Chrono Trigger, you know, went in time to do and they avert the Lavos timeline. But because Chronocross exists, this future doesn't exist anymore essentially. Um, because of the time and that's kind of what causes this time crash of Keystone one. Um, to happen and, and that sends everything back. That sends Chronopolis.
What's a Keystone?
Oh, the Keystone, so the, the, the compo- the Compendium calls these Keystone times. So you have the, so you have the Keystone event that like triggers that timeline. Does that ex- does that make sense? So like, like, um. The, the, so Chrono Trigger and the cast going into avert the future, like that's like a Keystone, like in the, uh. In, in that timeline, if that makes sense. Um, so by averting that, that kind of sends this whole time crash back into twelve thousand BC. That sends Chronopolis. So, so, um, yeah, cause Chronopolis technology started to develop in reaction to this event. Um, and then they got thrown back to the past. And that's what spawns this whole other, so yeah, so Keystone one is Chrono Trigger's timeline. Keystone's two is essentially the Chronocross timeline. And you ha- kind of have this loop with another timeline and the home timeline. Oh, I should have had this one up. Yeah. So on the left here is a really good breakdown of the actual events. So the one, two, three, four, five, six, seven is chronologically like the events as they happen. And then this kind of places them on the timeline where it ends up happening. Oh, is there an extra dungeon that ties in? I just remember the cutscene. Uh, but yeah, so, so the first point that happens is Colonel, the, the time crash happens and Chronopolis is sent back to the past. And that's this, this note here. Um, Balthazar arrives in ten, twenty, eighty and possibly over other time, uh, periods in another world. And that's this moment right here. Um, kid appears in, um, one thousand four AD and that's. So that's Scala kind of giving birth to kid and sending her to Luca and that's this moment right here in time. Um, we've got kid, uh, or surge, and then surge travels between dimensions and that's the, the game that we know is right here. Um, and we have surge, uh. Oh yeah, and he travels between, oh yeah, yeah, yeah. Cause he dies. So this moment where it branches off is whether he dies or not. And then he travels dimensions and then he kind of bounces between the two. And finally, at the end here, he uses the Chronocross to free Scala and that unifies the world. Um, I actually like this timeline is like the best one in my opinion, because it's like, it's kind of like the 3D chessboard with all the timelines. Um, and that's why I put that on here. Yeah, because the reptite timeline, when Kornop, when the time crash happens where when Chronopolis gets sent back. The planet reacted by sending this alternate timeline of Dynopolis back in time as well. Um, so that's why these are different here. I, I kind of like this visualizer because it's, you can kind of see the planes of time. And so this is the timeline with Dynopolis sent, being sent back. Um, this is the time crash where de- Lavos got defeated and Chronopolis existed and that got sent back to this point. Um, and that's why the Sea of Eden, that whole place is, even though it's from the future, it's from ten, twelve thousand years in the past. I, yeah, nope, I'm not touching Radical Dreamers, right? Um, first of all, I haven't played it myself. And I actually do plan on playing it because it's, it's essentially like a book, a playable book. Um, and so I, I'm actually looking forward to playing with it. Um, but it, the canon is, so, so Radical Dreamers is canon officially. But it's kind of Star Treked. It, it like, like it, it has the Star Trek treatment where it's just gets to be its own thing. Like it doesn't interfere with, like all of this is its own timeline and Radical Dreamers happened, but it's just its own separate dimension, its own separate. Timeline, I guess is, and, and again, I haven't played that game yet. So, um, that's definitely on my list of things to play this year and I'll get there and that'll be fun. At this point, they might ruin the franchise if they touch it again. I guess so, huh? Um, I know, like more games would be fun. I mean, this, this is super chaotic, right? But like. It's not like Kingdom Hearts, like, like if you were to try to draw out Kingdom Hearts, it would not look this clean, right? Like the fact that we can actually kind of get, like this is, there's really only three kind of. Separations here, right? Like ignoring the Radical Dreamers timeline. Like you, this is the main timeline here, right? And you just have the one. You, you just have the timeline with Lavos getting defeated and Chronopolis performing in expe- its experiments and causing the time crash. Where these mo- where ev- all of these kind of meet here. And then you just have that second timeline of surge drowning or not drowning. Um, that splits off. And then that, yeah, and that's, that's why I like this explanation because it, this is just a more detailed version of this. But yeah, I don't know. I, I think when I finally, I don't remember when I like actually searched for timelines at some point, like. Like this has been on the internet for forever, right? In fact, this says two thousand five on the chrono. Yes, this has been, this has been around for a long time. Um, and I remember like when I first saw this, like that's when everything clicked for me. So I was like, oh, I get it now. Um, yeah, nope, I'm not gonna try to ex- attempt to explain here. I haven't even played all the.
That'd be in Azala.
Yeah, unfortunately Azala had to do, he's, he's actually doing some, he's recording a Final Fantasy thirteen thing with a friend. So. He wasn't able to do this, but I, I needed to present this, even if Azala couldn't make it. Like I needed to get this out there for. Because Nish is now officially like getting gro- like he's gonna, he's gonna beat the whole game on the speedrun. And, and he, like I, I just feel like it's really important that you, uh. Like at least have an understanding of what's going on because that'll help you like run the speedrun, I think. But anyway, oh, I forgot I put this one on here too. I actually don't like this map as this, this graph as much. But I know a lot of people find this helpful because it kind of literally, um, lines them up by time. Instead of by like. Um, or i- i- or it lines them up by, um, like dimension instead of like in a timeline form. So I know some people find this helpful, so I stuck that on here as well. Um, but yeah, no Dragon Guard, I haven't even played all of the Dragon Guard games. So like I, I don't have a good handle of, of what's going on. Um, yeah, I know they go together.
I've only played replic- I've only played a Gestalt and Automata and I still barely understand what happened to neither of them, so.
Yeah, so I, like I definit- that's definitely something that I hope, like I, I do plan in the future to play through those games on stream. Um, just because like I haven't played them really a lot and so. That will definitely be a thing in the future. Uh, and I'm sure I'll get into like the crazy to, or I can start tomorrow. Well, I'm having fun with Odin sphere right now, but I, I definitely, I. I'll either after Odin sphere, I might jump back into either Radical Dreamers or Chrono Trigger. Um, or yeah, actually Dragon, like that's, I would not be opposed to getting into the whole near Dragon Guard. Um, storyline of things, um. Could do a zero cosplay. Anyway, yeah, so any, do you have, uh, any, any other questions or comments or anything I can help maybe clear up after this?
Yeah, so what, so when they were in Chronopolis, there was a bunch of, like, when they were getting to the area where fate was stored, there was the, the sign of the door that said Project Kid.
What is Project Kid? So that, that's related to, um. Um, hold on, I actually think I have specifically, I think I did copy a section in my note. That's literally what is kid. Let me see if I can find it. Um, give me a sec. I need to. Okay, yeah, so, but, but basically Project Kid is the name of. Or that's what Balthazar chose to call. Um, his project and, and that's the whole, that, that essentially Project Kid is his plot to free scholar. Um, and, and to destroy the devourer of time before it, you know, consumes all of the space time continuum. And, and he basically like. For the greater good, he, he used, he literally used Lynx and surge and Lavos. Like and the, he, the Dragonians, he, he took all of that, uh, uh, into his research. Manipulated all these of, uh, like, uh. Basically helps to manipulate these events. Uh, and used Chronopolis as a way to, um. Essentially, like orchestrate time so that surge would get the Chrono Cross and free scholar. Like, so that is Project Kid, like that whole.
I, I thought Project Kid was, was, uh, Luca's doing.
No, no, no. So, yeah, so Lu- Luca's involved because she is the one that got. Essentially got cu- in custody of kid, right? Um, and that's kind of why Lynx, um, like raided the orphanage. Was because fate knew that kid. Um, and like, like fate knew that Luca played a part in like the code. And in, um, in all of this, but like didn't know the details. And so basically fate sent Lynx to like raid the orphanage and go after Luca to get these answers. Um, so that's why he went after the orphanage. Um, but yeah, so pro- Project Kid is just the code name for Balthazar's master plan in. Orchestrating everything for surge to save scholar, like that's it.
Balthazar, the master of.
Yeah, and, and that's kind of why he like appears at the very end because, so, so when he, when you end up back at the library at the end of the game. Like that's him revealing, oh, by the way, the actual final boss of this game is the Time Devourer. And I've just been behind the scenes because I've been, I've been waiting for this day where I get to talk to you and tell you to save scholar. Is like what he's saying, basically.
And then after you beat, after you beat dragon god on, in a. Terra Tower. Balthazar is like, yeah, dragon god's not actually a physical being, it's something else, but that gets like matched, the text gets matched, matched through before I can read it.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. So that, so the dragon god is a part of this. Reptile dimension timeline. Um, and that, that's why, like, we like never hear about this timeline, like, like this timeline like doesn't exist, right? Um, like Chrono Trigger, like, like there's a reason why, because people started playing this game. Yes, because, because, uh, in Chrono Trigger, like you don't fight dragons, like that's not a thing. And so a lot of people are like, where did these dragons come from? Like. What the hell, like the, like this whole archipelago seems to revolve around these dragons and yet like. There's not a whiff of this in Chrono Trigger. And so a lot of people think that that's, you know, like. A cop out, I guess. Um, but yeah, so that, that, that is because. They can, you know, the creators considered this whole timeline where lava didn't exist and where. The reptites got to evolve into superior creatures like the Dragonians. And the Dragonians cre- but you're right, you're right. So the, the dragon god's not a living thing. It is, um, it's fate. Like it's literally the Dragonian, the reptite version of fate.
Oh yeah, okay, that's, that's what they meant. It, it wasn't a physical being in that it wasn't a naturally occurring thing. It was the, the Dragonians creating their god to manipulate the elements. That's what that, that's what he meant by that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. So and that, that's why I have that slide where, like, that's why I put both Chronopolis and, um. Dynopolis on the same slide. Um, because I, I was gonna have like a whole explanation of each little individual section, but really they're both tied together, like. They're both almost the exact same thing, just in alternate dimensions. Um, and the, yeah, Terra Tower is the, the mother nature, you know. Version and fate is the, the gross polluted human technology version, I guess. Yeah, it's a, it's a trigger, uh, of alternate ending if you, if you fight Lavos when the reptites are the dominant race. Yep. I, I heard all of it, sort of understand it, but boy is all of that confusing. Yeah, and I'm not even getting into, there's so much, like there, there's, there's so. Because I mean, obviously there's people, that, that's what the Chrono Compendium is all about, is like people have literally. Analyze like every little line of dialogue in all of these games, right? And there's. What was that?
TLDR, the TLDR is that the people at Square need to calm down.
I seriously. And, and I also don't blame them.
We got the near stuff, we got Kingdom Hearts. They're, 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 they're just doing all of it.
Um, yeah. Oh, I got a new follower. Oh, Ca- Captain Dan, thank you so much for the follow. I'm sorry I missed your follow. I. Um, I'm getting caught up in these explanations, but. Oh, Cronev, uh, Luca also created her own unfinished time egg that Balthazar expanded on to create his Neo Epic, if I'm remembering. Yes, you are absolutely correct. In fact, there is, uh, in, oh, I don't think I have a good. Picture of the library, unfortunately. Um, but there is, um, a reference to the Neo Epic in this game. Um, and yes, you are absolutely correct. So that, that's how Balthazar becomes kind of a time traveler in all of this. Uh, was because of the unfinished time leg that time egg that Luca created. Balthazar also explains that the dragon god died a long time ago and only an echo of its power still existed. Yeah, so that's actually, I've. There's a, I've heard a lot of different theories involving this. So apparently the official Ultimisa guy, uh, Ulti- Ultimish. Ultimania guide, thank you. Um, I've got.
Doing too much E twelve.
Seriously, E twelve. Um, the Ultimania guide and like in a, an interview with, I can't remember the creator's name now. Oh no, I should have wrote it down. Um, officially, apparently the, like, I think it's like ten thousand years ago. The Time Devourer like ate the dragon god. But, uh, there's actually a lot of contradiction with that statement because, but, but yeah, ultim- I think. And I'm not gonna even try to try and explain it or even understand it, but, but yeah, long story short. With all of this whole dimensional time crash happening. Um, the, the, yeah, the, part of what makes the time devourer so scary is, um. Because it consumed this dragon god. Um, and really this is El Nido, you know, we're just, it, with the dragon gods there, they're, they're just this echo of this. This powers kind of a thing. And yet, um, and that, that's where the contradiction is because there's the time devourer. Who's kind of fighting with itself because of scholar, scholar. Of whether or not it wants to literally destroy everything, you know, life, the user, u- universe and everything, or you know, not. And yet the dragon gods very specifically have the goal of like killing off humanity, right? Like. Um, the Dragonians are the superior race and humanity is killing the planet. And so the dragon gods were very much made to like.
Bring back our trees.
Exactly. Um, so it's interesting because, yeah, there's a theory that's like, oh, it's contradictory because. If the time devourer, if, if the dragon god was actually the time devourer this whole time. Then why does it have this mission to defeat Chronopolis and defeat, you know, the planet? And, and I don't really have an answer for that. Like I, I, I don't know. I, I didn't, I personally never thought of it that way. Um, to begin with, but that is apparently like there are some canon explanations that. Say that that's the case and I just don't personally understand that one, actually. But yeah, because if the dragon god created Harley, Harl in order to free itself and to, to wreak havoc. It clearly still had some kind of s- seen tea, like it, it still had free will as, uh, to some degree. In order to, for Harl to exist, right? So the time devourer isn't this, isn't in complete control of the time, the dragon god. I don't know, that's a whole nother, I feel like that's a whole nother discussion and doesn't. It, it doesn't play into the direct story of Chrono Cross. That's kind of just a whole nother fun conversation people can have.
Yeah, it's one of those things where it's. Dig into the lore. Super relevant.
Yeah, like that's, that's, you're getting into like Ethis territory there.
Yeah, that's, that's usually where I check out.
And I, I don't personally, like, I don't consider myself like the Eth- Ethis of Chrono Cross. Like I'm definitely not at that point in, in stu- like I have not studied the lore that much. Um, I just, I've just loved this series for long enough that I just have had a long time to think about it. So I feel like I have a decent, like a good understanding of it. Um, at least more so than, than, uh, Kingdom Hearts anyway.
I have a, I feel like I have a better handle on Kingdom Hearts, weirdly enough. But then again, I also haven't played either of these two games.
Right? Yeah, but since you missed my casual run through, you know, this is, this was due.
At least the, at least the important parts, like I would, I, I think I jumped in on a stream as you were fighting fate.
Right.
I'm like, I'm like, where are we? How did we get here? What's going on?
Yeah, and honestly, there's, the Chronopolis dungeon is pretty interesting. Um, there, there's a lot. I mean, it's not a large dungeon, but there's a lot of individual kind of lab rooms. And, and it's actually really cool to like. Read through all of these experiments that the people of Chronopolis were conducting. And like what that means for the lore of the world. It's act- and that's where like the whole save point thing happens, like. Um, and, and there's like literally a map of El Nido and, 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 and all of that. So it's, it's really cool. Um, to explore those areas, um, if you ever get a chance to, because it, it, there's a lot of text in there and, and a lot. Like, and that's, I know I've heard PH and a couple of other people kind of make fun of the fact that like. Literally Chronopolis is like the second to last dungeon in the whole game, right? Like it's, you're, you're. You're towards the end of the game. This is end game stuff. And like this is where all of this lore dump happens and. And another reason why a lot of Chrono Trigger fans are a little upset with Chrono Cross is because. Like again, not only did they render the Chrono Cross events kind of almost irrelevant. But like the fact that, like if you're a Chrono Trigger fl- fan playing Chrono Cross for the first time, like. You're barely getting any sense of how this game is related until Chronopolis. Like the very end of the game, you're finally like connecting all of these dots. And so a lot of people, you know, are like, that's really bad storytelling. Like this is a horrible game because of that. Um, I don't see it that way, like ju- just as a standalone, and, and that's why a lot of people say it's a great game, but a bad sequel. Because as a standalone game, the info dump in Chronopolis to me isn't. Like that bad, like it, because it does answer all of the questions you were having while you're playing the whole game. Um, but yeah. Um, yeah, any other questions? I, I know there's a lot of like side character stuff. I probably didn't touch on very well, but, um, hey, Azala. Yeah, like it's a, I think it is a good sequel and it's, it's, it's not the sequel people wanted, I think, right? And, and I think that's why Enix probably doesn't, is too scared to touch this franchise to make another, uh, game. To be, to be honest, so the, the people that, the, the scenario writers for Chrono Cross. Apparently proposed an even darker like story scenario that they rejected. And that's actually what eventually became Xenogears. Like, so a lot of people, like from my understanding. Like the sequel, you know, the Chrono Break game that we want, like. Does exist and it's in the form of Xenogears essentially i- is my under- and in, um. Does exist and it's in the form of Xenogears essentially i- is my under- and in um. Oh, not Tactics, uh, there's another game also that ends, ended up getting a lot of the ideas that would have been Chronobreak. But um, yeah. Uh, doesn't help that the entire game takes place in an area that basically doesn't exist in the original game, so it's harder to connect. Yeah, and that's why, that's why I put that on the map, like this, this fan like went out of their way to like theorize. Like, this is where I think El Nido is. But here's the thing, El Nido. Like, I, and maybe this is another reason why people don't like it, is because El Nido does not exist in Chrono Trigger. Like, because um, El Nido can only exist, um, where's that timeline? Oh, why did I, I, I made these separate to like not confuse people, but I should have just had the slide be its own thing. But yeah, El Nido can only exist um, in this future where it wasn't averted. Basically, so, so the Chrono Trigger timeline. That the cast of Chrono Trigger knows about, there is no El Nido, right? And I guess that that probably is also upsetting for Chrono Trigger fans, but. Yeah, oh, did I read all the comments? Yeah, welcome, Azala. I'm glad you were able to make it to the very end of my explanation. Um, oh, uh, Sea of Eden, the the e- the Sea Eden's time stands still. It's the dragon god and fate are the one in the same, kind of the same way the Chrono from Trigger has a reptile vision. Um, yeah, I guess that's a, that's, that's a good way to think of it. Um. I I don't think actually the dragon god and fate are one in the same, though. The, the, that, to me, to me, um, and that's kind of. Why I broke, why I made this slide, cuz like, you kind of have these four entities and um. Like, the dragon gods are one, and then fate is another, and then Schala is kind of this big old. Miss Lavos type mistake that happened, and Serge is kind of the inciting incident to allow. These three entities uh to kind of. To finally kind of play out their story, yeah, to fight it out. I think they made, if they made a game or a part of Chronocross that covered Chronopolis and the time crash, a lot of Chrono Trigger fans would be a lot happier with the connections. Maybe, yeah. Um, and actually, from my understanding, that's what Radical Dreamers kind of is. So Radical Dreamers is, takes place after Chrono Trigger, and you have, like, Serge is a character, but he's kind of completely different. Kid's involved, Miguel's involved, um. Uh, it it kind of, to my understanding, Radical Dreamers kind of is that, like Radical Dreamers. Was explained to me as it's almost the pilot for Chronocross. Um, so it kind of is that, Ringo, um, in a way. But because it was, but it was a pi- like, and and what I mean pilot, like, I don't just mean like as a, as like the first episode. Like, leading into Chronocross. It's also the pilot in that it was al- it was kind of their like beta version of the game. Like, their alpha version of the game. Um, and then they kind of developed, let's say, made Radical Dreamers and then developed. Took took those ideas, you know, and we're like, oh, we like this idea, this idea seems to work, this idea doesn't seem to work. Um, and then eventually developed Chronocross from that. It's like the Frozen Flame was introduced in Radical Dreamers. Um, oh, Radical Dreamers is not considered canon by the author anymore? Okay, see, I've heard different things, Azala, because to, from, as far as I've read and understand. It is canon, but it's just been Star Trek'd, is is like how I understand it. Like, it, it's canon, but it it's just gets to be its own dimensional universe. That doesn't interfere or have anything to do with Chronocross or Chrono Trigger, like, at all. Like, it it just gets to be its own thing. Um, was how it was explained to me. Um, they tie into all endings of Trigger, that's why I say they are the one in the same, the, oh, they doctor. Yeah, who this, okay, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense, yeah. Yeah, for, I guess for all intents and purposes, like, how they manipulate the planet and the timelines are the same. And then it's just a matter of who's, who's the pup, or who's the master, you know, behind the strings, I guess, is is the one difference between the two. Um, but yeah, any, any other questions or I don't know, now's.
No, not, not, not now, I'll probably, I come up with something, I'll ask you.
Yeah.
As a one-off, that was very, that was very helpful.
Thanks, yeah, I, I know.
I appreciate the work and the effort.
I mean, okay, and I, I feel like I do need to explain this to everybody, but yeah, so this started off like, um, so when I beat. Casually beat Chronocross, um, Mad Refugee came to me and was like, you know, I had to miss, I had to miss a lot of your streams. And so there's actually a lot of like holes in the story for me. And, you know, is there a time where you could just sit down and and explain the story to me? And I was like, yeah, sure, let's do that. Um, and and at the, at that time, it was like a, oh, yeah, sometime this week, you know. But, you know, I don't know, doing Genshin or something, but like, I'll just talk through the story. And then, and I can't remember what happened that week. I, I think. I think just a lo- a lot of things happened that week that made it so like every night, like we ended up doing other things. Um, and then I kind of also realized at the end of that week, that's like, oh, like, I don't think I could properly explain this without like. Some visual aids, and so I kind of like, decided, oh, I'll just, I'll just put together. Like, originally, it was just like, oh, like, here's Lavos and Schala, and then I think I just had like the map up. Like, it was seriously only like four slides or something like that. And like, I had, I think I had them, I think I had the map and like this slide made. Um, and like, that was kind of it. And then we kept, like, push, like, and then, and then the presentation kept not happening. But then, like, every once in a while, like, Mad Refugee would bring it up, and I'm like, oh, yeah, like, I should do that. And so like, this was after like a month of just me kind of tinkering. And then like, I think two weeks ago, it was like, okay, it's actually gonna happen, I'm gonna do the thing. And so that's what first maybe lo- like, made me expand the PowerPoint, and then last week, I'm like, no, this time for real, it's gonna be a thing. And then I ended up having something happen that night. And so, yeah, this was just after like just a week or or a month of just like. Uh, it just gradually grew into this presentation. Um, yeah, and if anyone wants a copy of this, like, I really don't mind, like, sharing it, um, or my notes.
Link, link it in your Discord.
Yeah, cuz I, I also, yeah, oh, I should, I'll do that. I'll definitely post this on my Discord. So yeah, if you guys, if you guys want access to this presentation or my notes, I actually like didn't refer to these notes as much. But I, I also made notes for like each slide, and I cut, and by notes, I really just mean I kind of copy and pasted stuff. From the Chrono Compendium, um, but they, they do correlate directly with my PowerPoint, um. So yeah, I, ooh, excuse me, but yeah, I will definitely put this on my Discord. Um, if any of you guys want access to that, um, please join my Discord and you can find it there. And if you guys ever wanna talk about anything related to Chronocross, um, you know, I would love to talk about it. It's, it's always fun. Um, I, PH is a, uh, so someone actually earlier, I, I did read your comment and I didn't address it. But someone asked about the speedruns, um, oh, who was it?
So Captain Dan, the new subscriber.
Oh.
Follower said he was interested in the speedrun, and I explained that normally you're speedrunning, but this was like.
Oh, thank you, Ringo. Um, but yeah, so that's, um, I, 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 I'll bring up the speedrunning community. Because I feel like that's kind of where a lot of the core fans of this franchise and and Chronocross specifically kind of linger now. Um, and 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 there's a person named PH who, um, I'm actually gonna shout him out. Uh, PH, what was it, one, one, two, three, five, eight? Okay, um. Oh, I forgot. The link for our speedrun's still up, which is fine, because this way people can still follow Mad Refugee. Um, anyway, PH, like, I feel like is actually, has a really good grasp of like the. The intricate like story details of this game, and he, he, like, anytime he's speedrunning, he'll bring up. Like, a bunch of this stuff all the time. Um, so if you get, if, like, he's definitely someone I would definitely recommend to. Um, he's an active streamer that I would definitely recommend if you ever wanted to talk more Chronocross. Um, he's another person to go to, but yeah, feel free to ask me questions at any point, anytime, I could be playing any game, I am happy to talk about Chronocross. Um, and I think on that note, um, we also, um, Mad Refugee and I also wanted to go over that. This is a good, perfect transition into, um, let's talk about the speedrun notes. Um, because I, um, I have a really good grasp of what to do with the speedruns. Um, and I mean, so far, I've actually been really lucky. I've been able to improvise fairly well. Like, I haven't really died to not failing to go off script. I've had, but I have had to run away from a lot of fights, and that's super, um, not fun, having to run away from a fight. Where like, if I understood the fight better, I probably might not have had to run away. Um, so yeah, I think we're gonna move over to that. Um, unless does it, does anyone else in chat have a question or wanna address anything else or talk about anything else? Just related to the story of Chronocross, um, while I have the presentation up? I can't believe I did that. I'm like, actually not the best at like making fancy PowerPoints, so I'm like really proud of that annoying dot.
A bat. A bat every time. Azala missed the bat.
Azala, did you see it? Did you see it this time? I'm really sad cuz I thought I was gonna do the same thing.
When you went through, when you went through it the first time.
Yeah, yeah, I thought I did the same thing for this Komodo. Like, I thought I was gonna have, I thought I made it so the Komodo would run across like really fast along the screen. But apparently I didn't do that, so whatever, it's fine. Um, but yeah. Yeah, TLDR, Chronocross is one gigantic time loop. Uh, by Serge being dead or not dead. And Serge dying is what inspired the Time Devourer to reach out and be like, I wanna save you. And, and yeah, that's ultimately what it's about. And that, I think, that was a huge, like, that, that's, I think, what clicked in my brain for a lot of this. When I realized that Kid, like, what role Kid played in this, cuz you, you flashback to a lot of cutscenes of Kid. And she kind of just appears from nowhere, right? Like, she just kind of appears out of the blue. And, um, so it's just like, wait, why is Serge like having all these feelings about Kid? And you're just like, no, like, Kid saved his life and and, um. Like, but yeah, you don't, you don't get any of that in the speedrun, so. Serge is Moi for the Time Devourer. Well, yeah, apparently it is canon, cuz like, the, in the good ending. Like, it very strongly, um, hints at Kid and Serge getting married. Like, they, they very clearly end up together, um, at the end of the game in the united timeline. Um, in the good ending, so, I mean, that's a thing that happens, so. But yeah, alright, I'm gonna, um, call this good. And uh, let's see, I'll switch back to, oh, I have to put my hat back on. Okay, yeah, so, there we go, guys. You can now feel schooled in. You, you've all.
I've, 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 I've been learnt.
You've been learned. You, you've had your Chronocross one-on-one lesson for the day.
Wait, that was one-on-one? That's two-on-one, like.
I don't know.
It's just, the, the capstone is Radical Dreamers, apparently, from what I'm understanding.
Well, and I skipped a lot of Chrono Trigger stuff. Like, like, I, 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 I put in as much as I needed to to explain stuff, but.
Right, right, right.
But yeah, if you were to play, actually play Chrono Trigger and and you wanted to actually get into the lore, like, there's a lot that that opens up. Yeah, so this, this is just Chrono Trigger, like, or this is just explaining Chronocross like kind of as its own. Story entity, and then, yeah, i- it, it would be a lot crazier if you tried to factor in like the entire franchise. Which, as I try, you know, bringing up Radical Dreamers and stuff, you already got into like a good, you know, ten minutes of conversation there, so. Uh, anyway, okay, I'm gonna take the hat off, cuz I am no longer an expert. I'm gonna be learning from myself, and we're gonna go through these notes. So, yeah, feel free, if, if anyone is interested in learning about the speedrun, how to do a speedrun for Chronocross. Um, that's exactly, we're gonna be going over that, so, um. Yeah, and if anyone has any questions or anything, let me know. Um, again, if you join the Discord, um, like, if, and if, and if you are a speedrunner. And you've been doing this for a while, um, feel free to hop on and and join the conversation. And if we're like, saying something wrong or something.
Making sure these amateurs know what, will know what we're talking about and not spread info information.
Um, the problem is the, oh, the plot points of Trigger are, that are needed to understand Cross never happened in the straightforward game. Yeah, and that's, yeah, that's a really good point. Um, because of this whole time crash thing, that's, oh, I already switched it out, let me switch it back. Yeah, because of this whole time crash thing, right? Cuz, yeah, this dotted line here is the averted future of Chrono Trigger that like, ended up not really happening, right? Yeah, there's, I remember reading this whole, I'm not gonna get into it, but yeah, I remember reading this whole like essay. Of like, the time crash and like Chronopolis. And why, why is the Dead Sea different from like the Sea of Eden, like, cuz, yeah, you've got the, the, they look different, right? You've got, um, like, the Dead Sea here, but like, that's not Chronopolis. Like, the Dead Sea is a completely different place from Chronopolis, and there's like a whole, because this whole wonky timeline stuff of existing in the future. But only existing in one timeline, you know, and all of that stuff, like. There's like this whole explanation that I'm not gonna get into, um, but that's one example of like, just, you know, how. Crazy you can get into this. Uh, but you're right, like, none of that, even though that's related to be all, that's related to Chrono Trigger. Like, none of that is actually in the game itself, um, like, you'd have to explore the lore to get to those kinds of answers. Um, but anyway, um, yeah, let's, uh, get into these notes. I actually didn't think through, like.
I'm, I'm not sure how, how, how you wanna go about doing this.
Yeah, I was about to say that. I'm like, I didn't actually think through, like, streaming this. Like, I, I wanna stream it just in case, like, there is someone out there that's like new and is interested.
I could Discord stream it, and if you wanna add the Discord stream to.
Yeah, let's, let's do that, let's do that, that's a good idea.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's try that, let's see how this. We're doing it live.
Okay, um, I don't.
Uh, I'll just do a screen share.
Do I have to make a whole new scene for this?
Uh. Probably not, I don't.
You guys? Ah, I'm getting shy here. Okay, um, but yes, yeah, thank you so much for the follow again, I'm Captain Dan seven-two-one. Um, I hope this was a fun thing for you guys, and and yes, thank you so much, Squirtle, thank you everybody, um, for this. And yeah, we're gonna get into how to speedrun. Um, once we, but yeah, we're gonna switch it over to Mad Refugee. Watch the stream. So do I just need to add Discord as a?
You probably just need to add Discord as a source, yeah.
As a source, um, which window?
Maybe, I don't know.
Um, oh, I still have that up. I'm just gonna add it to this one. Um, as a media source? No, that's wrong.
Your game was still running on.
I do still have, I know. I realized that, I was like, oh, that's still that game. Where is it? Let me turn it off right now.
Oh, so Captain Dan, there's a lot of good people in the community actively running, uh, this game, and they are very entertaining.
Yes, actually.
Would recommend watching all of them.
Yeah, cuz I, I saw Handy was streaming, um.
He was streaming earlier, he's, he moved over to nine, but he was, he was doing a run.
Okay, okay.
But he's, he's moved over to nine.
Yeah, it's, it's honestly a great community, like, that, that's, it's part of why, um, part of what inspired me to stream. I wouldn't be here partially without the Chronocross community, and they're, they're just really helpful, like, they're really encouraging, they're really supportive. And everyone's been great. Um, I'm still trying to figure out how to add this source. I'm not just talking just to talk. Um, uh, display capture or window capture?
Uh, you could prob- depending on how, like, professionally you wanna do it, you could probably, you could do like a screen capture. I'll start.
Oh, that's the wrong one.
I'll start typing. Typing.
Wait, nope, that's not it. That's just your stream. General Discord, oh, there we go. Um, done, and I'll just, I'll just crop it down. Um, done. And I'll just, I'll just crop it down. Something like that. I'm, I'm like not good at this, you guys, but it's fine. There we go, that works. That'll work for now.
Yeah, good enough. We're not, we're, we're not, it's not gonna be too, too in-depth, but uh. Quality.
One of my favorite, I, I have a streamer that I like to watch, um. He, he's a Final Fantasy XIV streamer. Um, and it's, it's Puka, oh, oh, now I can't remember his full name. Um, but Puka's kind of the, the start of his name and he, he's, he's got these things called. Oh, Pukajitsu, thank you. And he's got these Pukasos, he calls it. It's like you can redeem points and he'll literally just pull up paint and like Draw. It's one of his like chat redemptions and I, I, I think it's so fun. So I have um, a version of notes up and I'm just gonna like take I'm gonna like write notes here and that, and then I'll just go in and, and format my own notes. Oh, yes, thank you for, I actually probably should just shout out all these people, huh, Handy and Hobbs and PH and Carbon.
I'm pretty sure, I'm pretty sure I missed. There's a bunch that I missed, but.
Yeah, there's, there's so many people. Yeah, there's, uh, I think, I think actively in the, like people that I've seen play like Speedrun Chrono Cross, there's probably a good, I don't know, like ten of us, I wanna say. I mean, I say us, but like I, I'm, I'm super brand new to this. I am Mad Refugee, um.
I've only played this game for the very first time on New Year's Eve.
Yep, and it was glorious.
It was hilarious. I didn't know how to open the menu. Which I learned after the fact was because of emulator lag and not because of me hitting the wrong button.
Oh, really?
Yeah, on emulator, on base disk speed, it takes a while for the menu to load. So I hit triangle and it just didn't do anything. And so I hit every other button until, until it was good.
Interesting. Okay. Okay, so I can move you back over here. Sorry, I, I actually had to like switch around like where OBS, like where everything was. Because like the power, in order for me to present the, to do the presentation, I had to like full scr, like I had to present it. I guess I could have done it differently, but that's how I wanted to do it. And so I had to make that, it, the whole monitor had to be devoted to just that. Which meant my OBS and my notes and all that had to be a separate screen. Uh, but yeah, okay, I think I am ready.
Okay. So basically, like, yeah, like.
There we go.
Where, where do you? Uh, so Captain Dan, I'm using on recommendation from Azala Duck Station. Uh, for emulator. Uh, but that's just, that's just what I have access to and I tr, I trust Azala's word on tech, tech stuff.
I'm gonna change the title to Speedrunning 101.
There's other classes besides 101.
Nope.
No, there's not.
Um, going over. For notes, how to speedrun the game. Update, there we go. Perfect, okay. Cuz we are done talking about this story. Um, but yeah, so um, to touch on that more, yeah, so the, 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 I think, I feel like there's kind of two Main ways people play, like the, the fastest, like the most efficient way to play the game is with the original discs on a PS2 Slim. Because the PS2 Slim has a fast disk speed option, um, which reduces the load times, um. Whenever you're loading anything in the game. Um, and that's kind of considered like the fastest possible way to play the game. And then emulator is like a close second place.
Yeah, and it's not, it's not bad if you're like learning it, unless you're going for like good world record times, it doesn't All that matter, all that much.
Yeah, and um.
I would say.
And it's honestly, I actually still haven't downloaded, like myself, I haven't downloaded the emulator, which is actually a huge disservice, um, because I'm not Like I would highly recommend checking out the emulator for anyone interested in the speedrun because you Can practice things, right? Like you don't have to like keep reloading, like you don't have to dedicate a whole save on your memory card. Um, to like a specific boss fight or, or moment in the game for you to practice it. Like you can just have save states on an emulator and go back to them and practice whatever part of the game you want. Um, I mean, obviously you still have to play through the game at least once to like do that, but um. There's definitely some boss fights here and, and some like menuing and stuff that like having a save state would be really beneficial to doing. Um, to do that, so yeah. Yeah, Azala's saying, Azala, you can join. I'm, I'm just on my Discord, um, if you wanna join us, Azala, or like really anyone that has questions.
Or if you wanna li, listen to me spout nonsense for however long.
But yeah, so but as Azala says, like you're, like over the, like, so this is on average, like if, if you're, if you're a dedicated Speedrunner, like you're looking at around a seven hour speedrun, um, and The, 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 having the PS2 Slim with the fast disk speed versus emulator, you're looking at a six minute difference over the course of seven. Over seven hours, which again, like for world, for, like if you're, if you're trying to get yourself, if you're trying to place yourself, you know, top ten or something like that. That is a huge difference in time. But like, if you're just wanting to speedrun for fun and like you're just trying to get Uh, you know, just finish a run, for example, like it's really not gonna matter, like. Like I, I would argue it's not going to matter until you're trying to like sub seven. And even, it's still even possible to sub seven with an emulator, like it, like Carbon, I think is a, is a Um, case study of, of exactly that kind of scenario, so like, don't let that stop you. If you're not able to, if you can't get yourself the discs and or don't have the console, like don't let that stop you from playing this. Cuz you can do it on emulator, so. Uh, yeah, so I don't know, I, I think I just wanna, um. I kind of heard, we don't have to do it this way, but um, I kind of just wanna talk through like every point. Like every kind of major like trigger point, just to make sure there aren't like things that are being missed. Or like tips that I might have missed. Um, I kind of wish, like, I haven't done, th, this is just a very time consuming thing to do. And I just, and I know a lot of speedrunners have done this already, but it's like, um, like there are, oh, anyone in here in chat wondering? There are available like commentary, so um, kind of the earliest Version available for speedrunning that's available for co, with commentary, um, Evil Ash is kind of like one of the fathers of speedrunning this game. And Spike Vegeta, who's like a really popular, like just a GDQ personality, um, have both Done a, a speedrun of this where they both kind of switch off and then they both commentate on the game and the speedrun. And it's, it's from back in like twenty sixteen, I wanna say, so it's, it's an older version, but um, that's something you can reference Where they literally talk through these points. And then there's another Evil Ash one, I wanna say, or no, it wasn't Evil Ash, Gamma, um. There, there's, there's another narration of it, I think, for really, really long, long, I wanna say. Um, anyway, so there, there are resources for speedrunning this game that are available. And if you join, oh, I should link to the.
I hope my audio is not coming through.
Um, I'm not hearing it, so that probably means no one else on my stream is hearing it, so.
I'm just gonna try, so I was originally, I thought I still had my save file from before Fire Dragon from when my game crashed.
Oh, no.
Uh, cuz I had that save file and I was gonna do the Fire Dragon fight, but I don't, I don't, I overwrote it at some point, so I'm just gonna start. While, 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 while you're finishing up.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Like doing that, I'm gonna, I'm just gonna get to the next boss fight.
Oh, thanks, thanks Azala for the link. No, gosh.
I just gotta get to Gloop.
Yeah, I think Fort Dragonia is kind of my first big one, but yeah, there's. Well, I'm gonna, I wanna slouch a little bit more, so I'm gonna move this down a little bit. Yeah, no, no rush, Azala, no rush. Um, I just know you've put a lot of time and research into this and so You definitely would be a valuable um, thing to have.
Excellent. I have a save state.
I'm really sad, I actually should have double checked with PH cuz if I could have gotten PH on board, that would have been amazing, but, um. Yeah, I mean, obviously, we, obviously I think we both have like the early part of the game pretty much down. Um, but I still wanna kind of talk through everything just to make sure I'm not forgetting something or missing something important. And for anyone new in the chat, that's like, what's going on? Um, so yeah, let's do that, um.
Yeah, I'm just try, I'm just trying to get to the next boss fight.
Yeah, you're fine, you're fine.
So we can walk through a boss fight. With the notes and like alternate between the notes and what we're doing. Like I said, I thought I had the save before the Fire Dragon. Cuz the Fire, like, I, I've said it before, the Fire Dragon notes is where I really understood what the notes were implying. And made things click for every other fight.
Do you have a deadhead save?
I do not have a deadhead save.
Cuz like that would be, cuz like getting through that to get to Fire Dragon actually wouldn't be a bad.
Yeah, I don't have, the only saves I have are, uh. Are all in Dragonia or post links too, unfortunately.
I mean, it'd only take us like an hour to, to speedrun to get there.
Yeah, it only takes us there. Now, I just gotta go. I guess I didn't need to go, I guess I didn't actually need to do this because I'm just trying to get to Gloop. I didn't actually need, I don't need to activate these in order, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, this is.
Actually need, I didn't need to go this far. If we're, I'm just trying to get to Gloop.
It's a whole separate section. I mean, might as well finish it while you're here.
Yeah, might as well, yeah.
Because I think.
You wanna wait for that bat to go around the corner cuz he will aggro you.
Yes, yes.
Found that one out.
Chrono Cross Feeding 101, bats.
Bats.
Your first nemesis in this whole game. Are, they're so, they're so.
This is act, this is actually nice though, doing this because of the party switcher to get the characters in the correct order.
Yeah, yeah.
Is nice as well.
Yeah, this is probably one of the most like complicated puzzles in the whole game, actually, I would, I would argue. Because it, because you have to know to switch your party order with your characters in order to make this function. Um, and switching your party order is really important to know about in Chrono Cross speedruns because Um, whoever's first on your party list, like It, like when the game loads and it's your turn to start, like it's gonna start with whoever's first on your list. And it, and it saves a lot of, because all, the select button, you just press the select button to change your party order, so like you don't lose time Switching your party order.
Yep, like I'm doing right now.
Yeah, um, and so, like having, so if you know that you need to have A specific character go first to use like a specific ability or whatever.
The other, the more important one is that whoever's out in front is, when you use a beneficial element on an ally, It defaults to whoever's in first. So if like, if like Lena, like right now is your main damage dealer, which she is for this part of the run, where she's The, the magic dealer. You basically buff Lena up a bunch. And then have her do all the damage, so by having her out front, uh, it saves a bunch of time as you try to target the, the beneficial elements.
Yes.
On, on her. And then like later on, if like you're using Serge or Glen to do physical damage and you wanna use like strengthen on them. All you have to do is you strengthen and then you can just mash, you can just mash, mash cross.
Yeah.
At that point, because you know it'll default target them.
Yeah, in, um, yeah, and then there's also the other thing that's really hard, um.
Make a save state here.
Yeah. Um, and then knowing, knowing that dynamic mode exists, um. If for battle scenes versus just the man, uh, what's the normal default? Just default versus dynamic camera modes, I think.
I don't know.
Um.
I need to.
Cuz like when, when you casually play the game, I actually personally didn't like the dynamic camera mode. Um, cuz it like zooms in on everybody and, and it's kind of weird. But the dynamic mode makes selecting characters and like.
Yeah, it makes it a lot easier.
It makes it a lot easier. It makes it consistent between all the fights because for some reason the normal battle mode Won't consistently like select, necessarily select the same like character and stuff. And that's why, that's why your lead character matters, um, and, and.
Oh, sweet, Azala sent me a Fire Dragon save.
Ooh.
So we'll probably, we're gonna, we're gonna see if we can load this up.
Oh, yeah, Azala would totally have a save for that.
Of course he would. Self in the file, memory cart editor. We're doing this live, this is not a Memory card editor, hey, cool.
Hey, that's why this is a Twitch stream and not like a, a YouTube video or something, right?
Correct.
Which I guess it occurs to me that there really isn't. You, there isn't content yet for Chrono Cross or something like that, I guess. Like the, like, um, so like Azala, uh, thank you for linking the Evil Ash, uh, Spike Vegeta run. Um, I know for a fact that there's like two other commentated Chrono Cross speedruns, um, on YouTube that you can reference. Um, and uh, Andy, I think Andy has one or two. Um, and I, I know Andy's done some runs for like really, really long afon that he like self commentates on. Um, but yeah, there's not really like a go-to, um, like Short video on like how to speedrun Chrono Cross. Oh, Stretch, thank you for the stretch. Thank you for the stretch. Um, my hair is all over the place. Um, yeah, so I don't know, I guess part of this is, is to just go over these. Yeah, cuz what, what does exist is, um, there is a, there is just a Chrono franchise speedrunning Discord. Um, I don't have the link to it right now, but um, it's really easy to find if you just search for it. Um, I should probably post it like on my, like about me page or something. Um, oh, perfect, Azal, Azal is linking to a bunch of the other resources that you can watch. Um, but yeah, the, the official, the like official Chrono speedrun Discord Also links to all of these and it links to, um, like I said, Evil Ash is kind of like the father of the community and, and Um, he at one point was the, he, I don't know how long he was the record, world record holder for this game, but it actually was for a while, I wanna say. Um, and he's actually been updating notes. I think that his last update is actually like a year old now. And to my understanding, I know, um, Close to War, um, and Connor Cordell, who is the current world record holder Actually have like different notes from the Evil Ash ones, um, like I, I know there's a lot of new tech. Um, but the Evil Ash notes are the kind of the beginner basic ones. Um, actually not really, there's, there's another set that PH linked to That I saved the link to, that actually are kind of more beginner friendly than the Evil Ash notes. Yeah, so yeah, Evil Ash, um, was the world record holder for four years, so. Um, and he's still, he doesn't run the game anymore, but he's still like exists in the commu, like he's still around. Every once in a while, like I've seen him comment and stuff. Um, Andy's kind of the, um, Andy's a mod, right?
No idea how to, how to.
How to load the screen.
How to finagle this? Cuz I brought it over, but it, it didn't, it was still my O3 save, not my, cuz this is also an O3s.
Oh, no problem, Captain Dan. Oh, no problem, Captain Dan, have a good night and, um, I hope you have a good sleep and that you're able to have a good day at work tomorrow. And thanks for joining the stream.
Sleep deprival is the first step to Chrono Cross Speedrunning.
It's, it's true. Rango has felt this firsthand.
Bro.
Um, just load it for. But yeah, Captain, and if, if you have any questions, um, I'm hap, like, eh, like, I, this doesn't have to be a one-off thing, like if um, just ask anyone speedrunning it and we can help you out. But yeah, have a good night, thanks for the follow. I wish I could help you-ish, but.
Well, the slot, Azala, slot three is the one that has, uh, yeah, we could probably just.
You gotta fluff up me. Really, I should take Will's, uh, oh, is it gone? Oh, nevermind, he took it back, nevermind. While that was in the hallway, I should have, I should have borrowed his. I need a hair tie. And I only have the one pencil.
I'll try that.
There's one, no, I have one. I actually, eh, I don't wanna hair tie, I want, I want, I want a stick.
See, let's see if this, if I can load, if I can load from slot. See if this works.
Please work, emulator.
Well, it's not the emulator, maybe dumb.
Please work Nish's brain.
Team, memory card slot two. No memory card and found a memory card slot, rip.
Hey, can you hear me?
Hey, what's up, Azala?
Um, if you just go to Settings, Memory Card Settings, just point slot two at the, at the file that I sent.
Yeah, I did.
Yeah, but it says no memory card, just change it to shared between all games, and then make sure the past stays the same.
Okay. I do not have the brain cell correct.
It's also not the most user-friendlyest thing.
Right. Let's see if this.
Oh, I should have ended, eh, I'm gonna, hold on, let me, let me do this as a separate recording, so that that one's.
Make sure to do the menu, cuz the save was before the healing and equipping the two things.
Nice. I need to, okay, now that I'm actually available, I need to take away the race, eh, disable.
He gets the iron.
Nothing on Glen, just throw the, uh, Iron Vest on Lena, yeah, and mail on Surge. Normally I'd say it doesn't matter, but it's Fire Dragon, so it probably does.
Eh, and it's one of yours, so it probably does.
Yeah.
Alright. Alright, so. I guess, so, so my plan for this was gonna be go look at the Fire Dragon notes specifically.
Yeah.
Like, do a walkthrough of the Fire Dragon, like, turn by turn. Cuz like I said, this is the one that where I finally understood it. Uh. So basically, yeah, you, you have, you have, you effectively have these notes, but I have a couple extra notes in here for me specifically. Which may or may, which may or may not be helpful.
Um, I just realized I had salt and pepper for the fire, before the Fire Dragon opened up the actual Fire Dragon. Um, yeah, 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 so you have, um. Yeah, so you've got the AP value, the HP value, the common and rare drops for the boss.
Yep.
Um.
I don't actually look, I, I'm still getting used to like looking at the HP values and stuff like that. And the, the drop's not important, the big, the, the, of cour, the obvious most important one is the AP. Is really the only thing in this box that you and I need to worry about right now.
Yeah, so the AP, for anyone in chat, the AP means, um, and the game never explains this in their tutorials, by the way, so, um, or like, I mean, I guess they kind of explain stamina in the tutorials, but, um, basically, because it's a turn-based game, um, that's, that is the factor that the game uses to determine, um, like how often the boss gets to go. Um, between your attacks, um, and your characters get certain, get a certain amount of stamina that determines like what attacks you get to do. Essentially, it's like the two, did I explain that? I don't know if I explained that very well, um. And so, and yeah, so you, and then, and then I'll.
Different actions your characters take cost different amounts of stamina, which calculates against, uh, the AP of the enemy differently, so like, in a normal combat, your basic attacks are one, two, and three, where a one takes one AP, a two takes two AP, a three takes three AP.
Yeah.
Uh. And basically, once you as a player do enough AP worth of actions, then the enemy will go based off of their script. This AP value is what the smart people have figured out, is the minimum amount that the enemy will go at. It's not necessarily the maximum, but it is the minimum. So. Uh.
So the minimum amount.
So, yeah, so it's the minimum amount, so if the Fire Dragon just attacked, that means you have a guaranteed, uh, as soon as you hit the sixth point of AP is when the Fire Dragon can potentially go again, but until then, you have five AP to do literally whatever you want with no risk of the Fire Dragon going. But if, and then there's also the case where he might roll higher than this value, so every time he goes, it rolls a bit of randomness about how much AP they actually have before they go again, so this might be like a seven or an eight. Or, I don't know if it goes up to nine, it's, it's different. What the ranges are, I'm not sure exactly what the ranges are, but this, the big thing is to know the minimum. And that's what, and that's what this value listed is, is the minimum.
Azala, do you know the range of AP from all the bosses in the game?
From what I understand, the formula for determining the maximum is not very well understood.
Interesting.
Let's check.
So we, we know what the minimum are, uh, because people have essentially just like scripted going into the fight over and over again and just attacking until.
Until with a bunch of ones.
Yep, so the, the minimum is well-known, but it is not actually, as, at least as far as I know, is not well-understood what the maximum rolls possible are.
Interesting.
So, none of, like, eh, all of the strategies assume that you only have the minimum to work with anyway.
Yep, because you can't ever assume that they're gonna roll high, unless you're trying to make a risk.
Yep.
And that's just a calculated thing.
Yeah, yeah, I guess knowing what the maximum like would be nice for, to, to, depending on what you're risking, but like, it's really not gonna be helpful in the.
It's not super helpful, especially when most of the time they're gonna, they're probably gonna be closer to their minimum. I would say, like, tr- Handy says maximum is minimum.
Oh, we do know the max?
Hey, Handy.
Yeah, I was gonna say, hey, Handy. Wait, weren't you streaming? Interesting, that is interesting to learn.
But yeah. So like, knowing what the minimum is that he's gonna go is where you, is how you can really make most of your decisions for trying to follow the script.
Gotcha.
And for boss enemies, you know this, but for anybody who is watching and is learning, uh, boss enemies uh, will never go first. You will always get at least one action. Uh, at the start of a boss fight. So at the start, at the start of a fight, uh, the enemy will roll some value, a value between, uh, zero and their AP, unless they're a boss, in which case it's one and their AP. And if it's bunny, if it's off and only one. I don't know if the, if bosses, if enemies and bosses can roll higher than their AP on the initial round or if it's only their AP or lower on the initial round.
I have no idea, like, that would be nice to know.
I don't, I don't think that one matters as much, just because the first round is the more important one. Uh, because that one can roll lower than their minimum AP, you just don't know what they're gonna roll at the start of a fight, and that's generally what determines how a fight plays out. They could technically roll higher still, interesting.
Oh.
Okay, that's cool to know. But yeah, it's the first round of combat where they can roll lower, and that's why, that's why you have these different diverging paths and stuff like that, based off of what the enemy does. So. Yeah, less of a chance that they can roll one up to whatever, yeah, that makes sense.
Okay.
So. For Fire Dragon, since he has six AP, basically after Fire Dragon attacks, we get five guaranteed stamina worth of doing whatever we want. And then with that last bit of stamina or AP, we want to do starting AP actually changes the formula. Interesting. But yeah, so. The idea is, like I said, once Fire Dragon goes, he'll we know we have five guaranteed AP worth of actions to do, and then at that point, we can do whatever we want to tre, trigger him to attack. In this Fire Dragon fight, we basically do that by using Glen three threes with a stamina push, because for people who don't know what stamina pushing is, in Chrono Cross, you can, uh, queue up attack actions, as long as you have the stamina for it. And for the next two, for, for the current action you're doing and the next queued action, as long as the next action is queued, it will go off before the enemy gets to go. And it only does it for two, eh, for, for two actions, so, so basically two attacks, so by doing a Glen three three, although we're spending six AP worth of stamina, if, if we did this at if the Fire Dragon was gonna go next regardless of Glen hit with just a one, or if Glen did a three three, the Fire Dragon goes after Glen's done, so we might as well have Glen do his three three to get a bunch of damage in. Since it's gonna make Fire Dragon go at the exact same time. So the way this fight plays out, the idea is, is that we use, we start the fight, we want to get uh, the red off of the field. Cuz he starts with the red on the field and the fiery breath will do a lot of damage if that red is still on the field, as Azala will gladly tell you. Uh. So the first thing we wanna try and do is we wanna try and use Lena, a Lena one. Fiery breath, that's nothing. Never kills Lena.
No.
Never. We wanna use Lena and then an eagle eye on Glen to use two AP worth. So, this, eh, ID, eh, the ideal start is we can Lena one, eagle eye Glen, and then Glen will do a three three. The ideal start. The only, so, because Fire Dragon has six AP and we're only doing two actions worth here at Lena, the only way this doesn't go on script at this point is if he rolls a one, in which case we jump to this column. Which is a specifically different thing. So if after Lena attacks with her one, that Fire Dragon goes, we stop what we're doing up here, we immediately go to this one AP column.
Right.
If she gets the one off, and then she can eagle eye Glen.
Oh, thanks for the host zero, sorry.
Yeah, but then, but then Fire Dragon goes, before Glen gets to three three, then we have to, we have to modify it a bit as well. But, the key thing here is, if that, if Lena gets a one, the eagle eye off on Glen and Glen gets to go, at that point, it does not matter what Fire Dragon actually rolled on his initial turn. He could have rolled a three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, it does not matter. Well, maybe not the nine, but you know what I mean, it doesn't matter what he actually rolled, because we stamina pushed this three three, it covers that whole range. Because we're sending six AP worth of actions here at this mark. And so he's going to go at, he's basically guaranteed to go after Glen, does this three three. But again, it doesn't matter, uh, what he actually rolled in this first, in this first turn, because we're forcing him to go after Glen does this. And we're, we're setting up Fire Dragon to play along by our rules, we're trying to force Fire Dragon into a certain methodology and a certain script by planning on when he goes and stuff.
Right.
So at this point, let's just, let's assume the fight has gone normal. So now Fire Dragon's going to attack. At this point, we do a Lena one Aqua Beam. And then a Surge one, one turn blue at Glen. Now notice that this is five AP worth of actions. The one, the Aqua Beam, this one, this one, and this turn blue. So now we've built up the five actions again, that we know we are guaranteed. And ideally, we get this, uh, we get the red off of the field. With that, now notice that if we miss somewhere in here, if we miss one of these ones, we don't wanna spend more AP than we have access to. Because then it's gonna throw off the script, Fire Dragon's gonna go like after Surge before Glen gets to three three here. So like either, basically, at this point, we can miss one of these ones. Ideally, one of them on Surge, cuz Surge only needs the one.
Yeah, to get the turn blue off.
To get the turn blue off, but we're doing the extra one because he has to heal, heal Aqua Ball later. And just having, him having that element level for later would be nice to have, but it's not that important. The more important thing is getting these two blue elements out with the five AP we have.
Gotcha.
So now, so we spent these five actions, Fire Dragon's gonna go after our next action, no matter what it is, so we might as well Glen three three to get uh, two, two threes in worth of damage. And force the Fire Dragon to go after it, at which point he'll use Fiery Breath, because that's just where he is in a script. And now, same thing, same thing again, Fire Dragon just went, we have five guaranteed AP to work with. We do that by getting Lena up to level four, and then doing Ice Blast, which is, uh, which is five AP worth. Again, if it doesn't, if we don't quite get there, uh, this is where it becomes a little bit more, uh, you get a little bit more like leeway and like things, like if Lena misses one of these ones, you can potentially go for the Ice Blast and just have Fire Dragon go before the Glen three three. In which case you can uh, just move the Glen three three to like after this, we, you could just skip, like, you'd basically just skip this Glen three three.
If Lena was missing on her ones.
If, if like Lena missed one of these ones for the Ice Blast, just cuz the Ice Blast does so much damage.
Right.
Or you risk the high roll, like we were talking about earlier. Cuz if he rolls, if he rolls a seven and you only miss the one, yeah, cuz maybe you can get five Lena ones, Ice Blast itself Glen roll, yeah, exactly. And that's, and that's just what it comes down to, is whether you want to risk that, or if you wanna be safe. Yeah, it's pure judgment call, like Azala's saying. But like for this case, I would say the Ice Blast is more important, because it does so much damage, and at this point, there's still two blues on the field. And then just having, not have, just skipping this one Glen three three if he does attack, cuz it'll just be a normal attack at this point. And then we can just continue on from here by doing the Surge Aqua Ball and then Lena one one Aqua Ball. And note that, note that in this section, there's only four AP worth of actions. So we can potentially squeeze in an extra. So we can potentially squeeze in an extra one somewhere if we need it here. But it's just a matter of saying, we, knowing we have five guaranteed actions before anything happens, and then we can go.
Right.
Yeah, the big, the big thing is that. By doing up to the enemy's AP worth of actions. And then in the case of like, a fight like this where it's a physical carry. Doing work, like stamina pushing three threes to force them to go after this big, big hit. We can control when the boss goes and we can. Kinda dictate the flow of the fight.
Yeah, I understand.
And kinda control for RNG of it.
This is kind of the only, it's, it's interesting, cause I, I just noticed this is kind of the first fight where it even marks like the fi- like the boss's attacks.
Yeah, this, this was Azala's specific notes for.
Oh, so, oh, so that was Azala doing that. Okay, cause I was gonna say, like, that's, I feel like that's. Definitely, it's like, I understand AP, but like I, I've, I haven't made the jump between. Like applying the theory of knowing, okay, if this is the AP, then like, this is how you would manipulate it. Cause like, if, if, um, cause knowing, knowing, okay, these are the attacks we need, like, these are the most efficient attacks. We'd like to get off in order to kill this boss as quickly as possible, and then, and then I guess dividing that by the AP of the. The boss, uh, essentially, is, am I understanding that's kind of?
It's kinda, yeah, cause some of this stuff is.
Essentially what these, these notes are doing.
The main, the main damage source for the Fire Dragon fight is effectively the Glen three threes and this Lena Ice Blast. Are the main damage sources, and then the Aqua Balls are like kinda supplemental. To as extra damage while Glen gets his stamina back for more three threes, cause he's turned blued. Against Fire Dragon. And, and should be hitting pretty hard.
Gotcha, so, so if I were to try and like study this on my own, cause like obviously, like, we don't have time to like go over every single fight. Um, but to, so for studying on my own and trying to improve like specific boss fights, like the best, like what I would be doing is. Taking the AP of, of a boss, and then, and then from there, the next thing would be identifying. What the heavy hitters are for this fight, and then kind of planning around that. And so if things end going off script, or, and then, and then knowing if things are going off script, like, or what, what things. Can go off script, like you're saying, like if miss, if Lena misses a one after that, um, after the fiery breath, then like. Knowing when you're able to improvise and then knowing what things are absolutely like, no, if this does, like, if.
Yeah.
If this doesn't go on script, like I guess with Marcy, like going critical, when you're just like, okay, like. If she goes critical, like you have to kill her, like type of scenario.
Cause there's a lot of parts throughout, like these notes. Like it has what the notes are, are, but they don't really say what to do if it doesn't do that. I'm not even gonna bother looking at like, these, these ones are nuts.
Right, and that's, that's, and I guess that, that was my biggest question was knowing, so, so that, so, so kind of what we just walked through and what I was saying, like that would be the key to. Um, being able to improvise or knowing if you can improvise would be to break down the AP. Versus like the possible heavy hitting attacks you can do in a fight. And then, and then be, knowing kind of what else you can.
Yep. Yeah, it's generally speaking, identifying how you're killing the boss and what it, and what are actions to help you do the actions to kill the boss. Cause like. Doing a strengthen and an eagle eye on Glen for a fight. That stuff is, the one, the one strengthen and the one eagle eye, that, those, that's not doing damage to whoever you're hitting.
Right, but, and, and that's costing two AP to get that off per, you know, character.
Yeah, but the thing is that once you do that, like. You'll eventually get to the point where it's just like, alright, now Glen with the strengthen and eagle eye is gonna three three, he's at one stamina right now. Now what do you do? Oh, you just swing like. You swing with surge like a two, two, two. You don't, you do not care if he's hit, they're extra damage if it's nice, but he's not the problem, you're doing these two, two, twos to get Glen his stamina back, so he can three, three again.
Gotcha. Um, and then, and then I just wanna quickly say, so Miss Vito's saying he's going to bed, or they're going to bed, um, thanks for the good lesson, ADD, hope you all have a good rest of your night. Thank you so much for following along, I am glad you enjoyed this, um, and yeah, I hope to see you later, Miss Vito, have fun. Um, and then Super Handy is saying, for the most, I mean, obviously, right, the, there is no sub, and I've heard you say this on your own, Sub Handy, um. Um, there is no substitute for experience on knowing what to do when fights go off script, I mean, obviously, like, and that's, like, you just gotta get good, right? Um, but otherwise, because of how many variables there are, if you tried to write down everything, you'd have five pages of dragon notes, for example. Right, and that, and that's, that's fair. I, I guess for me, I just, um. Like, yeah, cause I, I, I am not like a math whiz, there's no way I'd personally ever be able to just think through like this character had, or this boss has X. Stamina, but, but at least being able to break down, um. Like, I think for me, kind of when I realized it, when we were doing that race and I had the, I had the ten magic Lena on the, um. On, uh, oh my god, Bunyip. Was it Bunyip or was it Taurusoid? Now I can't even remember anymore, probably Bunyip, but, um. No, actually, I think it was Gloop, like I, no, it wasn't Gloop. No, it was, I think it was Gloop, because it didn't die, and, and, and I, I, I wasn't, like, it was very obvious, especially for most of the four Dragonia fights, it's very obvious that like the. The goal of the fight is to like. Set up for Frog Prince and getting the Frog Prince summon off, right, and, and, um. Like it's, like I was very, like obviously able to identify that that was the strategy, but being able to work around, like, and, but knowing that that's the strategy and being able to work around the AP. Like, cause I don't think I made the connection with the AP, um. I was eventually, um, able to connect like with the stamina, cause I know I was also like, I missed a step somewhere and I wasn't realizing it. Um, and I would have known that with the stamina if I was wrong, but, but yeah, you're, you're right, Handy, like obviously, like. You're just not gonna know unless you play, uh, for a lot of this stuff, um.
Yeah.
But I ju- I just feel like there's a, there's, there's some bosses here that it's just like. Um, like, I don't know, like Marcy, like there's, there's definitely certain bosses, I guess, I guess another question that I, I've had since the beginning, and I'm not sure like how to ask it, is like. Cause there, there's some notes that bring up like, um, like, like that specifically will bring up a, an attack, like, cause we know Marcy will cat's cradle when she's at half health, right? And I, I don't, and, and a lot of the notes that I've gone through, like a lot of them don't mention those specifics for, like, cause obviously some bosses you're not gonna know. But like, I, I guess I wish a lot of the notes still had, um. Uh, well, these notes, I, I know the notes exist like on game FAQs, like, like. Do we know specifically which bosses have specific scripted, they use this, this specific element at this time? Versus which, which bosses are, this is the pool of possible attacks the boss has, and it could be any of them? Or is that just like boss specific? I don't know if that question made any sense.
Yeah, the, I was gonna say, my understanding was what Azala said, where they're just as scripted as fourteen bosses. Yeah, I think, I, they generally follow the scripts and just that.
Their AP rolls, but what they do when they act.
Yeah, I think that's scripted.
Is scripted.
Cause like, in the, cause like in the. Going back to the Fire Dragon notes, we know that he does. He'll do an attack here, and then he'll do fiery breath, and then he'll do an attack. And I think that's scripted, but for things like Marcy, if they, if a trigger happens, that will take priority over what they were originally gonna do.
Gotcha.
So kinda like, so kinda like an HP threshold.
So if you were, cause I, I'm sure these experiments have already happened, but like if you were to actually defend, like if you just did nothing but defend a whole boss fight until everyone was dead. Like it will literally be the, like the boss will do the exact same stuff, like in the exact order, right? Like it's not randomized? Am I understanding that right?
That's my understanding, yeah, okay. Yeah, Azala's saying the same thing.
So, so, so that's, so, so it's exactly, so it's not randomized and exactly the same, except there are certain bosses that will have triggers. And, and I, I'm fairly certain any of the bosses that do have triggers are noted in.
Yeah, Marcy's one, Link's one is one.
Like Evil Ash has that noted, right, or?
Yeah, Mar- Marcy's one, Link's one is one, cause he'll do the nostrum when he gets to critical health, unless you put him there via a dash and slash, at which case his. He'll respond with anti-white. Instead, instead of nostruming, and the, kind of the same thing with the, the pillage strat, the reason why the kid do- kid does pillage there. Is because that triggers him to respond on his next attack with, uh, Imbecile.
Gotcha, yeah, and I guess, I guess that's what I was saying, I kinda wanna go over the notes in general, like I think that's kind of what I'm, the information I'm. Looking for and not, I haven't found. Anyone's, like no, I haven't specifically found notes that will like. I, I, I guess it's in a lot of people's notes, all that information, but like, I can't, like, I'm.
Yeah.
It's not noted in a way that I'm able to like visually, like, catch on that that's what the note is for, that this is a specific trigger.
So Handy, in the, in the notes for on a two roll, uh, we just, we clipped, skipped the Glen three, three here, and then do a cert- we do the surge one, one turn blue, and then the Lena one Aqua Beam. Uh. And then Glen three, three before the fiery breath, we just, we just skipped this one. And by doing surge first because Lena's out of stamina. But that, the one, one turn blue should get her stamina back. And that's, that's, that's just what I have noted for me, specifically if he two rolls. Yeah, exactly, yeah, I, yeah, the skip if Fire Dragon attacked. And then swap their turn order, under the normal column. Yeah, definitely don't wanna give him a free turn. Yeah, let's, 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 uh, let's walk.
Yeah, let's, let's, let's play with that. Actually, I don't think that actually directly occurred to me that that's giving him a free turn till you just said that, so I'm glad you did.
Yeah, effectively, it's not that it's, yeah, it's basically because he's going there. He's not going where we want him to go, so we gotta try and get him back on the track we want him to be on.
Like going between the, the Glen's three, three attack you're meaning, right?
Well, he wouldn't go between the three, three, but if he, yeah. Alright, so. In the Fire Dragon fight, we know the first thing we gotta do is we gotta. Lena one eagle eye at Glen, or at least try to, we're gonna see what happens. So Lena's gonna get the one. Alright, he did not one-roll us. So means we can now, we can go for the eagle eye at Glen.
Yeah, you are missing out on five, yeah, that makes sense.
And so, so he two-rolled us, so this is the situation. Now normally. The only way, the only way that this goes off script, like we said, is if he one or two-rolled us, and he just two-rolled us, so he went after the eagle eye, but before Glen got to go. If Glen gotten a chance to attack, he could have done a three, three, and then Fire Dragon would have gone after the, the three, three. So going back to the notes that I have. So Fire Dragon attacked, so now we're gonna swap Lena and Surge in this turn order, so. We're gonna go down this normal column still. Surge is gonna one, one.
Okay.
We're gonna one, one turn blue at Glen, and the reason we have to swap Lena and Surge in the turn order is cause you could see Lena's still at negative one.
Right.
She can't go right now.
Yeah, she can't go, yeah.
She can't go. So we're gonna try, do the one. We got the one, see if we get the second one. Got it, so now we can turn blue Glen. Dynamic camera's not on. But it's okay. We're, we're doing this very slowly. And now Lena has enough stamina. And we had to do the one, one turn blue, cause she needed the stamina here, so we're gonna hope she hits. So unfortunately, this is one of those cas- cases where because it didn't go completely on script, we're at risk, we need, we're.
Right.
She needs, she basically, she doesn't need to hit, but it becomes a lot harder if she doesn't. Fortunately, she did. Interesting, good to know Azala, but, so yeah, so now, that's here, so now she can Aqua Beam. And so this Aqua Beam's gonna push the red off the field, as soon as she goes here. This is five APs worth. Cause Surge did a one, one turn blue, Lena did a one Aqua Beam, so we get to go again. Now, no matter whether we. So with Glen attacking, if we hit him with a one. Fire Dragon's gonna go. If we hit him with a stamina pushed, uh, three, three, he'll go after the stamina pushed three, threes, so we're gonna do the stamina pushed three, three. And now Fire Dragon's gonna Fiery Breath.
Gotcha.
Just like in our notes, so Fire Dragon attacked. And now we're back to. Where we are, so we're just at the Fiery Breath here. So now we're back to this part. Where we're gonna try and get the Lena Ice Blast off.
Oh, hi PH, I'm glad you could make it.
Hey, PH. So we're gonna go back to, so Lena can't go because unfortunately, because of the two-roll, this is, this also got a bit screwed. So we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to, I'm gonna have to. Mess things, I actually haven't gotten two-rolled after I changed these notes, cause Lena has no stamina. Uh, what we got?
I did, I did, Squirtle, at the very, very beginning of this stream, and, and you were the very first person to say hi on my stream, and I know I said hi to you. At least that's what I remember, I'm sorry if I didn't, I remember wrong. PH said hi. But I'm handy, like honestly, like, um. Like, eh, like I, I appreciate just like, even if it might be something I already know, like I appreciate you guys, like. Still explaining it again.
So, something we could potentially, uh. Do, so Lena doesn't have any stamina right now, and I don't have this in my notes, I'm gonna have to update these. Uh, so we're gonna wanna do, get stamina back, we're basically gonna wanna push this off until after the Fire Dragon attacks again.
Right, cause you're, yeah.
So, so we're gonna, we're gonna do stuff with Surge. So, we have five AP to work with, and we want to stamina push a Glen three, three before the Fire Dragon's attack. So we can do a one, two, two, or we could. Do a two, three, if we want to, again, Surge's auto attacks don't matter. Like at all. So the two, three's probably the fast, the fastest way.
Gotcha.
So if we do a, this, this is just, and this is just the impro- improvisation, I could, I could do a one, two, two, or I could do a two, three, but basically I wanna spend five AP worth. Here, to get Lena some.
So you know, okay, yeah, cause it's, so, so we're going off, so we're going off script.
Yep, we went off script because he two-rolled us.
Yeah, cause he, he two-rolled us, we swapped out, Lena doesn't have enough, uh, stamina to get, to get the Ice Blast off, and so. So the correct way to grow off script in this case would be because we know we need, we're, we're doing this in increments of five AP. Um, we just need to, we need to get a normal attack off, attack off on, um, in this case Surge, because, um, he doesn't need, immediately need to get an element off.
Yep, and he's also the, yeah, this, yeah, this one is. Yeah, this one is just to get stamina back on the team, this was purely to get stamina back on both Glen and Lena. Surge's damage did not matter here. It was nice that he hit, but it didn't have to.
Right, okay, yeah, so, so the dam- yeah, so it's just knowing, so at the point you're going off script, I, it's, it's, it's. Knowing the fight well enough to know not only how much AP the boss has, but knowing that this is just a moment, that the purpose of, of this moment going off script is to get. Oh, we only need to get, um, the stamina back for another character, so we can get back on script, to get like the Ice Blast off.
We're not gonna be able to get back on scripts, but it's gonna be trying to get close.
Right, so I gue- I guess, I guess in my brain now, cause, cause what we were saying earlier is, to me, I guess the script is just knowing. What your he- heavy damage dealers are and, and making sure that that happens, right, cause that's ultimately what's gonna kill them, and, and what you're saying earlier, like for this fight, it's going to be like the Ice Blast.
Yeah, and it's exactly what Azala said, all, the most important thing is knowing when to end your turn. Cause if I hit the Surge once, Surge has the stamina. To hit the one, but if I do that, Fire Dragon's gonna go.
Gotcha, and, and.
Cause I used five AP since he went last.
Gotcha, so, so knowing.
Well, he might not go. He might not go if he rolled high, but there's, there's literally no reason to.
Yeah, but, yeah, and Handy, and that's, and that's why, um, I'm so glad you're saying that, um, cause, so he said, um, if anyone can't read. I'm saying that's why knowing the fights, like a bullet point type thing is more important than knowing like the script super well, like knowing the beats to the fight, yeah, and that, that's kind of what I was getting at, yeah. Cause I, I, I think, I think it was when I had the ten magic Lena for most of Fort Dragonia, and I was like, and I, I unders- I. I, I at least knew, again, like it, it's pretty obvious that, you know, hey, getting Frog Prince off is the strat, and so like understanding. The beats enough to be able to execute that, um, this is actually good for me though, cause this makes sense, so because we had to go off script, script. Understanding the beats well enough to know. Um, when to stop a ta- um, when to stop attacking, cuz because if the point of, of this current turn is to just give stamina to Lena, then it's, the important thing is to know, right, uh, sorry, I'm just reiterating to make sure I understand this. Um, this isn't like me saying this is correct, but like, it sounds like the point is to know, oh, the magic number is five, so when I'm attacking the Surge just to get stamina back, I need to know to just stop at five stamina? Is that what you're saying?
Yep, that's ba- that's what I'm saying. And so this got stamina back on Lena and Glen. Cuz normally here, if we were on script, Lena doing four ones and then ice blast would also have gotten Glen his stamina back, so he could three, three stamina push. But because we didn't have that option, we just did it with Surge instead. And it doesn't really matter in this case because he's not gonna change the field. Cuz Fire Dragon, because he scripted, his next thing he's gonna do is he's gonna auto attack, which won't change the field. But yeah, so we spent the, yeah, you should be thinking, I need to get Lena's ice blast off next thing before she dies, then get Glen at six stamina. Yeah, cuz, yeah, it's just, it's, it's a lot of things to keep track cuz eagle eye will fall off if the fight goes too long. As well. But yeah. So we've gotten to, alright, so just to go back to the notes cuz we've been on the screen for a bit. Last thing Fire Dragon did was this fiery breath. We, if we were on script, we want, we would want to ice blast here, but we couldn't because Lena didn't have the stamina because he two-rolled us. So instead, we kinda improvised and we just spent five stamina of Surge's attacks to get stamina on both Lena and Glen.
Yeah, Handy, these are.
There's no, there's no, there's no gen- there's no genius in, in the Fire Dragon fight specifically.
Yeah, these are old notes.
That Azala shared with us. Yeah, so we spent the five stamina. We know that no matter what we do next, Fire Dragon's gonna go next. So, we're gonna wanna go back to Glen who now has the six stamina to do a three, three stamina push. And so now Fire Dragon, as soon as we do the, this, uh, this stamina push, Fire Dragon's gonna auto attack somebody after, so we're gonna mash the three, three. And we crit, which was nice. He attacked Lena. Alright, so now we're kinda back on script, so, well, kinda, sorta, not really.
Yeah, we're never.
We're never gonna be back completely on script. We would've been on script if he didn't one or two-roll us, but again. So he did his attack. So now we missed this ice blast before, but Lena has the stamina now, so we're basically just swapping Lena going here with, versus Surge going here. More or less, and this was just kinda improvisation. So we're gonna try and go for the Lena ice blast now. And so we need, one, two, three, four. So we got to the four and then this is gonna be five. And so he will not go because this is only using five. If we missed one, we would've had to make, make a decision. Do we want to risk getting the ice blast off before he goes again? It potentially messing up the field or potentially killing Lena before she gets the ice blast kinda thing. And that's just a decision we would have to make. Do we wanna risk the high roll? And in this case, because Glen is so, Glen hasn't been touched in terms of, uh, health. If he, if Glen did get attacked, we don't really care about Glen, like, missing a three, three after Fire Dragon goes, cuz that's not as important kinda thing. So we can, ice blast him and that will, will still get a turn after this cuz this was, this was five AP worth. And he's in crit. And now Glen is back to six stamina after that. Fire Dragon's gonna go next, no matter what we do, so we're gonna stand push a three, three. And so now we're back to, Fire Dragon's not dead yet, which is understandable. We haven't done like any of these Aqua Ball things. So now, now he's in crit cuz we, we got lucky on damage. He's pretty much close to dead. Now it's just kinda, how do we want to end the fight? So Lena is strong. Surge has Aqua Ball and element levels. Lena doesn't really have stamina, so we should prob- our decision's probably gonna be just have Surge do.
I love, I love everyone.
I may have just started doing magnify instead for that reason, praying he's dead before fiery breath.
I love everyone like theory crafting on the chat right now.
So this Aqua Ball plus one is actually an Azala strat that I've been picking up, that he's been putting an Aqua Ball on level four. But the notes that he originally gave us only had this Aqua Ball on level one. So we're just gonna stick with that just because that's what, uh, you would probably have in your notes at this point.
And it's all, I, if I remember right, Azala started doing that just because of the whole, he's been missing ice blasts for so long that he kind of just developed this strat, right?
Combination of that and the fact that Aqua, an extra Aqua Ball at level four isn't that much more expensive to buy one extra Aqua Ball and it potentially makes bunny up faster, depending on Lena's magic and so that you don't have to do the Luminaire animation cuz Luminaire's a long animation.
Gotcha. That's right. No, I remember you saying that, Azala. I do remember this conversation.
And at that point, the field is all blue ev- anyway cuz you just Frog Prince'd. So it gets the three strength from the, from that.
Rango, can you get the blanket that's in the dryer for me? Thank you. I'm getting cold. I washed, I washed my computer blanket, so.
Yeah, so at this point, we're, we're basically choose your own adventure of how you wanna end the fight. And this, this one is where it's just kinda like, practice and like knowledge and like seeing like, hey, Lena's at two stamina. I know she, she already Aqua Beamed her level one. So the only thing she has left is Aqua Ball at level two. She will not be able to get that Aqua Ball off. Uh, if I went with Lena, so we should probably go with Surge here. But at this point, we can potentially.
Thank you. Sorry.
Yeah. No, you're good. I wanted to watch it, watch it on the stream delay. So again, so Fire, Fire Dragon just attacked, so we have five AP to work with. So if we want to, we can potentially do a Surge one Aqua Ball to get Lena one extra stamina. So that in case she misses, it'll still be five AP worth and, uh, it'll still be five AP worth and it'll make it less likely for it to, uh, get us in trouble because Surge has full stamina. So I'm actually gonna do that, so, yeah. Did that, that make sense?
Yes, no, I, I super appreciate this, just because like, cuz I know, I know that we've been going off of older notes and, and I'm, I'm not at the point where I like wanna beg everyone else for their, their notes yet. Um, cuz like, I just wanna make sure like I have at least a good basic understanding on my own, um, with these strats before, you know, all these fun little variations that everyone on the chat right now is, is discussing.
The Aqua Ball is also nice on the, the Dragoon fight, Handy. Depending on what the Dragoon rolls. I had a really, real, I had Dragoon die so fast because of the Aqua Ball on level four. And it's just one extra equip. You're already on level four for Surge at that point when you're equipping it for the Bush Basher. It's just one extra element allocation. It's not that big a deal and you're already buying Aqua Balls in, in Terminus at that point, so it's just one extra Aqua Ball. Is the justification I think Azala had for it. It's like a, a minor thing. It's like plus or minus like three seconds overall, probably. Yeah. So, yeah, we're gonna hit him once, just give Lena an extra stamina. Bring on a Aqua Ball minus two just cuz that's what you probably would have. Yeah, also whether or not you go for guard skip. So we're gonna Aqua Ball him. So that's two, that's two AP worth. And this might kill, who knows. Yeah, it killed anyway, so. We didn't even need to worry about it, but that was just a contingency plan we could've made and did make in case we wanted to. But he was in crit for a while. He probably would've died regardless. Also Glen strong. Yeah.
Cool.
And so that, and that's Fire Dragon. So actually, let's, so I kinda want to, go back and run that backing. But like, but like a little bit faster.
I still thought the, our first, our first run through, like ha- the two, AP happened.
Yeah. Yeah, you could, yeah, and like Handy said, enemies are going to crit at twenty-five percent HP, so you can judge. Yeah, yeah, for sure.
I, I did know that. I actually, I kind of want to like, I, I, I know all, a lot of this stuff already, but like I kind of want to create like an actual like beginner one or one, one-on-one like speedrun version of some of these notes just to like, have all these like major like bullet point stuff.
Alright, so we're gonna put dynamic camera on. So remember, our first step is Lena one eagle eye. We're gonna try and get that off. He didn't go eagle eye Glen. Let's see if Glen gets to go this time. Glen will get to go. So Glen's gonna stamina push this three, three, so Fire Dragon's gonna go after this. We are on script. So he does his attack. He crit Lena. Oh my god. What a bully. Yeah, so we're on normal scripts. Now we can follow the script basically to the, to the T because we got to this part. So we're gonna Lena one Aqua Beam and Surge one, one turn blue at Glen. Where the more important thing is getting, the most important thing is getting these two blue elements, uh, on the field to get the red off the field.
Yeah, Handy, your, your, uh, your tips and tricks video was really ha- like handy.
So Lena got the hit. So she's gonna Aqua Beam. Surge is gonna one, one. And then turn blue at Glen. And so that was five APs worth, so Glen's gonna get to go again. And we definitely want to spend all five of the AP cuz if we didn't spend all five of that AP, Glen would not have enough stamina to three, three. So even if we, so, even, we got both of Surge's to hit, uh, which was nice, but if it didn't, we still wanted to do the full five AP worth just to get Glen his three, three stamina push. So he's gonna fiery breath here and probably kill Lena because it's an Azala. Uh, nope, he went after Glen. Still hurts like a truck. So going back to the notes, we are still on script. He just fiery breath. We can Lena one a bunch of times to ice blast. And it works out cuz Lena's full stamina because we're on script.
Are you, is Azala saying like Nishala's like tainted your save with his own luck?
So here's a, here's a, here's a good situation. Lena missed two of her ones. So it's a potential here. Do, eh, this is a, should've named Surge Azala, definitely would've gotten Lena. So yeah, this is, this is a situation where we can ma- have to make a decision. Do we think that Fire Dragon is going to kill Lena or Glen? Or do we wanna try, or do we think he's gonna high roll? And that's just the decision you're gonna, you, you have to make. So I think the decision I'm going to make, so I'm gonna go for one more Lena one, which is gonna be five AP.
Right, cuz we, cuz we know he's going to attack next, but we don't know who.
We know he's going to attack next. We can't get the Lena ice blast because we missed two of them. So I think what we're gonna do is we're gonna switch off and we're gonna stamina push the Glen, uh, three, threes while he's still turned blue and they're still two blue on the field. Cuz Glen can potentially die.
Yeah. I think that's something that attracted me to this game is the fact that like, like there's so many other games, right, where, where people know like exactly like the damage count that like boss attacks will do. But because of like the field effect in this game and a lot of other, you know, crits and stuff like it, there's, I feel like there's such a huge variation in like potential, like how much any one attack from a boss can like damage you for. And that's, it's, I guess it's kinda exciting, but it's also hard to plan for.
Alright, so now we're improvising again because Lena missed and she didn't get her ice blast off, but she's alive.
She's alive.
We're definitely gonna want to get, uh, Lena's ice blast off now cuz she might die. Yeah, the field effect's really predictable.
Oh, that's a good point. That's a good point. So, so we realistically do kind of know then. Like how much damage is being dealt.
Yeah, which is why like all, from my understanding, why most of the Frog Prince strategies work is because we know what the enemy's gonna do at exact time, so we can plan when to make the field blue to Frog Prince.
Gotcha. I, I guess that, that's something I've never factored in up till now. Like I, I, it's never occurred to me to track or, or to, to like kind of know, I, and you're not, I mean, you're not gonna know until you play this like fifty thousand hours, right? But like, just knowing that, oh, like so, so, uh, the, the Fire Dragon can only ever do like a range of X amount of damage or whatever.
The thing is, I think that's still, I, I think on enemy auto attacks, they can hit any number of times. Like it's, I think they can spend a certain amount of stamina, so their damage ranges are huge, I think.
Gotcha. Okay, so then that, cuz that's what I was originally thinking was like, part of this is the fact that you don't know.
Sometimes the boss enemy will be like two, two, two and hit you and sometimes they'll just be like, ah, small poke. Just wasting time.
And you, and they can miss, right, like?
And they could potentially miss, yeah. Yeah, exactly. Like you can't really predict damages, damage that you're gonna receive. You just gut feeling.
I know. I just know that that's instinctually the kind of information I wish I would know, but, that's not, that's not how you play this game, so.
So Lena got her ice blast off. So that was two, that was two AP worth because Lena had to attack once, so Surge has three he can work with. So we can potentially go Fire Dragon. We can either go for the two or we can go for the one, one. It doesn't matter. The two would be faster animation wise cuz he's in crit already. We don't really care. He happened to hit. We can do the, Aqua Ball. He's still not gonna go. And he is still alive, but we get to go. We didn't get, we didn't get Glen to six stamina because we, suggestion, YOLO threes at all time.
Dude, I, I, I do do that and it's.
Come around strats. Exactly.
I actually have a question.
Oh, Rango has a question.
On the last turn, on the last turn, would you have ever gone Surge before Lena so that the ice blast would stamina push? Would that have gotten Glen up to six stamina or no?
Or ice, eh, elements can't give stamina.
Okay. Never mind. That was the piece I was missing.
Get Paul Eagle Eyes. Elements give, elements give plus one.
Or plus one stamp, sorry, sorry. So elements, cuz it's one st- yeah, anyway, it's one stamina to use an element, so using an element will only give one stamina. Sorry, that's the more accurate way to say it and.
Yeah, they just, they can't be pushed, yeah. So, we only have the five stamina to work with. Eagle Eye fell off cuz the fight has gone on decently long. So we're gonna, we're gonna stand push a two, three here and hope it kills the, the Fire Dragon. Cuz it was just unfortunate that Lena missed two ones when we were going for the ice blast. So in order to get back.
I don't remember, did, did you actually give like a, this is what stamina pushing is explanation? Oh, okay. I, I wasn't sure if you.
He used physical for the example and I wasn't sure if that was the only way it could happen.
Yeah, cuz I think you can only use physi- uh, you can only stand push physicals.
Which makes it, yeah.
Only do two attacks worth. Cuz if I, if I just mashed.
No, please. Please ask questions. There, there are no stupid questions.
Cuz like if I were just to sit here and I've, if I mashed one, 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 if I mashed five ones, Fire Dragon's gonna go after the second one in there because it only counts the, the first queued action as part of the stamina push. So if I, yeah, remember the year twenty twenty when Mad Refugee hadn't heard of Chrono Cross? Yeah, if I, if I had, yeah, and like Handy said, if, if, if Glen had seven stamina and queued a one, three, three, he would've got, he would get stopped after the one, three cuz it only queues two, two attacks. Regardless of their level. So because Fire Dragon here is gonna go after regardless of what we do, we're gonna stand push a two, three just because it's our best chance of hitting and killing because the eagle eye fell off. Which is unfortunate, but it is what it is. So we're gonna stand push this two-three cuz it's just, that's just what the stamina we have. And we missed. So he's gonna go again. And kill Lena cuz it's an Azala, save file. Which is really unfortunate, but he's still basically cl- like on the verge of death. Like if we don't care about Lena's stats, if we just wanna get through this fight, we can just surge.
Care about her, this is why I had a ten magic Lena for all of Fortagonia. And it's the worst.
We could, we can revive Lena. That was only one.
We saw nine magic Lena earlier today. That was really sad.
Yeah, once the bar goes gray, you can no longer queue another attack with the first one, yep.
Handy's saying if you have any questions, Rango, he'd be glad to answer.
So we're, at this point, Serge really doesn't have a way to kill Fire Dragon cuz he only has three stamina to work with. But Lena has seven to work with. And reviving her will only cost one of our five that we have to work with. So we might as well revive her and also to try and get her stat up. So Lena's back here. We have. Uh, we have four stamina to work with.
Rango said the words. Rango said the words.
Cat percent. Yo, get Rango in on these races. So we know Lena, we know Lena has an Aqua Ball on two. Yeah. We know Lena has an Aqua Ball on two, so we're just gonna try and go for the Aqua Ball on two. This will almost assuredly kill him.
Oh god, we're already hearing about his one world record.
Yeah. So that was a case of Fire Dragon. Again, going off script, but us being able to like improvise it just based off of. What happened.
And, and that, and that's entirely gonna be personal preference, what happened there, just because some people are gonna care a lot more than others. With, you know, whether or not they care if Lena's stays dead or not, I guess.
Yeah, oh, in that case, like getting Lena alive was our best way to kill Fire Dragon cuz Serge already Aqua Balled. He didn't have. He didn't really have a way to kill him, but Lena did. So using the, and he already had the element level, so that having spent the one AP on the revive was worth it. I'm just gonna do it. Unmas. But we're gonna do, we're gonna do it real fast this time. And not, not really go.
Yeah, just, just the commentate as you do it strat that everyone does on their streams.
Yeah, let me, let me actually pull my notes up on the other screen so I can actually see them. While doing the fight.
There it is, the compromise. Your time will be soon. Your time to, to join the Robo Recall leaderboard.
So we're gonna Lena one eagle eye on Glen.
Right, and this is why I know.
We could stand push these three-threes. Fire Dragon's gonna go. Lena's gonna one Aqua Beam. And then Serge is gonna one-one turn blue at Glen. Put the dynamic camera on.
Yeah, dynamics.
So he didn't go because we only did five stammas worth. And we're gonna stand push these three-threes. He's gonna go Fiery Breath. Going after Glen again. Lena's gonna go for the. Ice Blast. He didn't miss this time. So that was five stamina, that was five AP worth. He's not gonna go again. Glen has the six Stam. Back. And the reason, a lot of the, reason a lot of these notes are set up is that they don't. The smart people before us silver already did all the calculations to be like, yeah, Lena does this, Glen's gonna have enough for another three-three stamina push here. And then, so now Serge can do his. Aqua Ball. This is just fol- this is strictly following the notes. Cuz it says consider skipping and it would probably would be a skip because he's in crit already. And then Lena could just do. One, two. Aqua Ball and that'll kill him. Or not. Interesting. Uh, we're gonna. We're gonna Glen YOLO one-three. YOLO.
You did it.
Yeah. Yeah, so that's.
YOLO threes proven.
YOLO threes. Hey, I did a one-three first, excuse you. Yeah, Glen has a growth rate of one point one for Stam, yeah. Yeah, so that's, that's the Fire Dragon in the notes and walking through them. We didn't get a one-roll and I'm not gonna sit here grinding it out for a one-roll. But basically the idea is, just to show you like the, the train of thought for a one-roll. Is that this'll happen bef- like if he goes before Lena gets the Eagle Eye off. You'll immediately jump to this one AP column. You'll do the Eagle Eye at Glen. So this, so because he went so early, this is already counting towards our five at, our five. So that means we only get to do, uh, one, two, four. Five actions worth. And then Glen three-three stamina pushes and then we're into the Fiery Breath. And then because we're far behind already, cuz Glen missed the three-three already. And Lena missed an Aqua Beam already just because of the stupidly low roll. Uh, oh yeah, one roll on this fight. Sucks. It's all, it took so long just to get the memory card loaded. I don't even wanna, I don't even wanna try. That'd be awful.
Oh god, yeah, no, it's all, you can do that and then I will host.
Kamikaze strat cuz it's always, it's always terrible.
You, you can do that and I will host your, you can, you can host it on the Discord and I will put that up and we'll, we can watch it that way. If you really care.
Yeah, one roll on this fight sucks just because it. Takes away so many of your turns, really. It, it, you lose a lot of instances of damage. You lose this Aqua Beam, you lose this Glen three-three. Like the only way, the, the yellow Kamikaze strat. This is all getting pissed at Fire Dragon by magnifying before the Ice Blast. I like it. Yeah. Yeah, that needs to be. Is that, that's, that's the general idea, but.
No, that's super helpful. So it feels like, so. Cuz I, I guess the other reason why I ask is, is just knowing like. Cuz obviously as Handy was saying, like, nothing's gonna just be just playing the game, right? Nothing's gonna be just running through the game. But like, I also feel like, so I can't, obviously I can't play the game all the time. And so. An effective use of my time outside of playing. Sounds like an effective way would be to go through the fights. So, so basically just, just really get to know the AP very well. And then get to know, um. Yeah, what, what are the attacks? What, what are the, the party attacks that actually matter and like? What are, what are, what's just there for the sake of like stamina and stuff, which is, I guess it's pretty obvious, like it's like. It's pretty clear when it's like, oh, usually you're just gonna have your one heavy hitter and the other two are just there to. Like buff them up basically and give them stamina.
I think the other big thing that helped me, helped me understand the notes more is also while doing that. Trying to predict when these notes want the enemy to attack.
Gotcha, right. Like, like it was annotated in the fiery dragon.
In the fiery dragon fight, but they're not all annotated that way.
Right, so, and then, and then I'm curious if looking up what the scripted. Attacks are for each of the bosses would be worth. I, and I, I guess it's something, if you play the game a lot, you're gonna just. Know, you're just gonna learn what those attacks are, but like.
Yeah, I don't know if that's super important.
Gotcha. Because, well, I just feel like, I feel like a lot of this is factoring in like, oh, like these are gonna be regular attacks. So it's not as big of a deal if you, if you miss and you're just trying to get stamina back versus like, oh no, like a. Cat's cradle type of thing is coming up or something. But I g- I guess there's really nothing, so to my understanding, there's really nothing like that. That's not like Fate or Dragon God. Um, that's gonna be like fa- no, okay, okay, so this is what, you were saying this earlier, so. So knowing when it's gonna, when something's gonna be fatal, I guess is what's worth looking up and getting to know really well.
Potentially, I would say.
So not, not so much lear- learning what a scripted attack sequence is for all the boss fights, cuz that's not reasonable, but knowing when. Something, where the danger zones are. Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, and also like going through fights. The low AP ones are definitely the easier ones to figure out. Uh, what, what the strategies are and when the enemy's probably gonna go. Like Tarasoid being at an eleven. It's real hard cuz you get a lot of stuff in here, but Tarasoid's also like a good tutorial. Of how much stuff you can get in in that eleven AP, cuz like, the Tarasoid eleven AP here. This defending until backdrop, backdrop is his attack. Uh, and let's just, let's just assume, uh, you don't need to do the backup, say nobody dies at the backup. You have eleven AP to work with. You do. You do one.
Yeah, so you're getting all the elements off, yeah.
Four, five, six, sevens worth with a lot of, uh. With a lot of, uh. You have four AP extra to work with before he goes again.
Right, so that's, and that, so I guess knowing the structure of the turret, so because it's eleven AP, that sets up the structure to be. The first half of the fight is just getting everyone's, um, element levels up. So that, once he gets another attack off, you know you have eleven AP to get. All of, all of that setup. You can just unleash all of those elements and.
Exactly. Exactly, and because these are, because we did the risky part earlier with potentially missing and not building up the, the levels. And because, again, because he has so much AP to work with. He actually, he'll actually do the, the. Whatever his first element attack is, somewhere in here probably, cuz he'll low roll, cuz this is five, this is six. This is ten. The chances of you getting all these. Like. In an ideal world kind of thing, he would go ask, he would do his first thing here. Where, where the cursor is, because that is ten APs worth, but realistically, he's probably gonna roll lower than that. So he's gonna go somewhere in here and interrupt this.
Right.
It's just that. Based off the notes, the rest of the stuff we had to do, like almost no matter where he interrupts us. Almost. It's still risky if he really, really low rolls, cuz low rolls always suck. We have a lot of time to get these extra things built up. And then once we have the stuff built up, that's why we, that's when we defend until backdrop, just because we don't know. What he rolled, we don't care what he rolled, we just know that once he goes, we have enough, we have everything set up and we have everything. We have everything set up, we have enough AP to work with, and we have enough, uh. Leeway in case, cuz the only risky part, if everybody survives the backdrop, the only, literal only risky part is a Glen one and a Lena one missing. And we have four AP. To do that.
Right.
Poten- potentially, for Tarasoid specifically. And so that's why this strat is set up the way it is, is that. Yeah.
I think something that I didn't really understand until now was the fact that like. I kind of got confused with the fact that, okay, this is eleven AP for this boss, but like. At the beginning of the fight, it's still kind of up in the air and that's, I think that's. Kind, might have confused me a little bit as well, not understanding that. Like the AP doesn't come into effect until the boss does his first attack, right? Like, and so.
Yep. Yeah, basically you pray they, they roll high and then once they attack the first time, then you know. That, now you know where they are and that, and yeah, and that's also what. Uh, PH said, is that Tarasoid, because we're doing elements and elements cost seven stamina. You might go into negative and stuff like that, but again, we have the extra. It's all, i- it's nice as well because. Even if we don't necessarily have. The. Extra. Stamina work with, like we can defend on somebody else to give them another chance at it. It's slow, but it's something you can do. Yeah, like PH said, you still have to keep an eye on stamina, just because we're doing a lot of elements and elements obviously drain their stamina a lot.
Yeah.
But yeah, Tarasoid's a, a cool, is, is a cool one because it's like, yeah, build up, you're, build up your combo. Wait for him to go and put his shields down. You have, you have ten actions to work with. To get a Frog Prince off completely. Yeah, we have some spare AP. Yeah, so I'm gonna go to the, the giant Gloop light here. Cuz that's just where I have a safe state and I'm in the fight already. So.
Yeah, don't get tunnel vision on the strat. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, if, yeah, that was, that was a big thing for me too, just realizing, oh no, I missed the, the two afterwards. Let me do another two trying to hit, but that's completely screws up the AP and now everything is way out of whack and now. It's just all, it's all, it's all great googly moogly.
Yeah, and I knew, and that, that's kind of why I asked to do this tonight, um, PH, is because like, like I knew enough from watching you guys stream. To know that like, once you're off script, like once you miss, like. You can't, and, and it's not always, and I, I also knew it wasn't always the case that like, once you miss, like you, you're officially off script, but like. Yeah, like understanding enough to know that like. Yeah, if you're gonna miss or yeah, the, the boss, you know, low rolls you or things like that, like. Like just, just not quite understanding. What, like what are you supposed to do? Like, like, how do you then use the notes that you, how, how do you then use the notes in the script that you do have? To then be able to successfully improv off script, I guess. Is the best way I can phrase what my question was before starting this stream. Um, and I think I do have a better understanding now of how to do that. Successfully.
So another interesting thing, a little bit of optimization, depending on what you're trying to do. Yellow threes. Listen to PH, he knows.
I, you know, I'm all about, if you, yeah, if you all, you'll watch my casual stream, you know I'm all about those three threes. The, the sixty percent chance, the thirty percent chance three threes. I'm not afraid to do it.
So, so yeah, like little optimizations you can make, if there's something you want to try and get in. So, right here, like Glen is a one-one-two magnify. We can't stand push the magnify cuz you can't stand stamina push elements, obviously. But we can potentially stamina push this one-two if we want to. If we really want Glen to try and be at level four. So if we do a one, pause, one-two here. It'll get Glen's four attacks off before Gloop would go, as long as Gloop doesn't one-roll us. So it's potentially something we, we can do, whereas otherwise if we just like do one-one-two queued up, if he happens to two-roll us, he'll interrupt between the one and the two. And that, uh. And that if he like interrupts and say he attacks Glen, now all of a sudden Glen has to do another run up. His accuracy is reset because he got attacked, all that nonsense. And so just recognize, and so also like, like I said, mini optimization things you could potentially do is, so like I'm gonna do a one, pause, one-two. The chances of him rolling this low are, are not super high. But it. It's like, why not? At least, at least that's my philosophy on, on some of these.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we're gonna do the Glen one. He didn't go. This, this, this is me going through slowly again, so I'm gonna stand push the one-two. And so we missed. We definitely want Glen to be at level four though, because that's, that's another thing in the. The notes. If there's like an element that you wanna cast, I, I'm pretty sure it's, it's a decently high priority of wanting to get that element off. Or if it says one X to a level, you want to try and prioritize getting to that level because it's more important. Whereas like. A one-one-two magnify here versus. Whereas like, a one, one, two magnify here versus like. Uh. Like a surge two, two, three here, this surge two, two, three. Is for a little bit of damage, but it's more so to get stamina back, so we don't care as much. And we don't really care if they hit. Whereas opposed to one like this in the notes, where it's a one, one, two magnify or a one, level four to ice blast. Uh. We know it's more, the element level's more important than the stamina.
Right.
At least, and that's ju- that's still on a case by case basis, it's not a hundred percent guaranteed, but from my understanding, the notes, if the, if the notes have an element. That you want to cast on the same line, or if they have a level, you kinda want to try for that, more so than ignoring it if you happen to miss.
Right.
So we're gonna try and go for this Glen two again.
And I, I understood that already, I, I think what I wa- I for sure was not considering, like what, if I miss with Alina trying to do. Like a one, one, four to get a nice blast off, like I was definitely not factoring in the AP. Uh, like the AP cost of having to do additional.
An additional one, so yeah, so he happened to. Yeah, this, this fight is very safe cuz for Glu- Gloop will specifically only do blue elements, so you don't have to worry about this one, but this is just a. A demonstration, and this is just where I had a safe, or I had a, uh, safe state.
Yeah.
Yeah, so he didn't hap- so he happened to not go, which was nice, here, so we're gonna be able to get this magnify off before he goes. Yep. Right, right PH, yeah, you can do a one, one, pause, one, one, or you can do a one, one. Okay.
Wait, 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 say that again, hold on, you can do. One, 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 one versus a one, one, two and a one, 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 one. As identical for a stand push situation, because the game groups every pair, gotcha, okay, nevermind, I understand that.
Okay.
The gamer, okay, I actually don't think I understood that until now, thank you PH, um. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. Interesting, interesting, okay, that actually, uh, I for sure don't think I understood. So, cuz I, cuz I definitely understood the whole like, cuz you can do it twice in a row, but yeah, if you're, if you're trying to set up for like a level seven or something. Then that's.
Yeah, o- okay, I see, I see what, what, what specifically you're saying PH now, yeah, why was Sprig, we do one, 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 two instead of five ones? Yeah, exactly, yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah, so the one.
I got, I got you now.
Yeah, the one, 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 two is like a one, one, and then a one, two, whereas a, whereas five ones in a row, you can get interrupted before the last one, that makes sense.
Yep.
I for sure did not understand that before now. Or at least, at least that did not occur to me until now, that that's of course the case.
And also going by, and following on that, uh. By doing things in pairs. More often, instead of just like queuing all of them up, you basically limit where, you're, you're, you're narrowing the window where the boss can interrupt you. As well, cuz like, cuz like we said, if we did the. Uh, Rango, only regular attacks.
Yep.
Yeah, so if like, if it's a long string of things, like pairing them and sets together is. Reducing the number of places you can get interrupted, which is obviously nice.
So, so would you say it's good practice then to just always, so, so just get in the habit of always kind of. Um, queuing up your attacks in pairs then, so, cuz like I kind of always just wanted to do like just all three at once. But like, it sounds like what you're saying is, is to get, get into a habit of queuing quickly in pairs versus trying to get. Like all seven stamina off.
I would, I would say so. Uh, but like a good thing that I, a thing that I've been trying to do is like in guard fights in Viper Manor, for example. Because the guard fights in Viper Manor is just like spam two, two, three, right? Uh, but by doing it as. So by doing it as a two, pause, two, three, uh. By po- by stamina pushing the later attacks in the, in the chain. If, especially if you're only doing like three attacks, because you're not, not always, because we only have seven max stamina to work with. There's only so many pairs we can get in there with different levels.
Right.
By pushing it later, because of the way the AP system works, if we get that first attack off. And then we get to go again, then we can stamina push it like a two, three, which is five AP's worth, and they won't get to interrupt that. Whereas if we did, whereas if we did a two, two. That's four AP worth as opposed to the original two, that gives them more opportunities to interrupt us. At which point we would, point we would have to do another run up, if the character we were using got hit, their accuracy gets reset. So that's why doing like a two, pause, two, three is better than a two, two, pause, three.
Right.
Or queuing up a two, two, three all, altogether.
Yeah, and I've, I've been given that specific advice already, but like I don't think. Like, like for me, I just, I like, I heard that advice and I kind of just took that as, oh, for this situation, this is how you do it. But like, I didn't, I didn't apply that like as a global rule for like, this is why you wanna do that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm anticipating the hand, the handy comment too.
There it is.
I think, I think, I think, uh, I think that's what PH said, I think PH said doing a one, one, pause, one, two. I don't know though, I don't know, you guys, you guys can, you, you smart people can, uh, can argue that, I'm going, I'm going back to this. So you're just supposed to use, do a one and then genius Alina. So we actually got a, he high-rolled us on this Gloop fight, he's probably gonna go now, no, he still didn't go, wow dude. Holy crap.
A high roll, but like a max.
What was, what was, what was this, what was this, he, we got a one, one, two, so that's four, we had to do another two, so that's six, we got the magnify off, so that's seven. We got the one and the genius, so that's nine, and Lena's getting to go, he rolled high. I need to use genius on myself, damn, wow rude. Anyway.
Uh, I guess, I guess that one was inevitably coming, that insult.
Uh, yeah, so, Gloop rolled really high, so the, the, our, our goal here now is to get. Ice blast, Lena ones to ice blast, he's gonna interrupt us in here somewhere, for sure, he's gonna have to go, there he goes. So.
Oh, I forgot I was gonna wear my Lena wig for this stream, ah, I forgot, it's okay.
Uh, so, one of the big parts about the giant Gloop fight specifically for time save purposes. Is that magnify and genius go off here and neither of them are blue elements, but Gloop did, uh. Gloop did an element that was blue and put blue on the field. So by getting both the magnify and the genius off before. Uh, before he puts the blue on the field, that makes us have to do one less blue before we can frog prince.
Yeah. Which unfortunately has only happened to me once in all of my.
Yeah, this is actually the first time.
I've never.
This is actually the first time I've seen it, uh, seen it do that in a long time, he's like one or two rolled me the last like three runs I've done. Cuz I only learned, I only, I was talking to his all about it recently and only. Uh. Recog- recognize, recognize that when he pointed that out, I'm like, oh no, that makes a lot of sense, and then just haven't seen the situation come up.
I know.
So Lena's at four, she's gonna ice blast.
Also, also just a heads up, the strat is a fifteen magic Lena, uh, Lena strat, so lower FP might not kill.
Yep.
Okay.
So we did the Lena ice blast.
No, and I learned that with my ten magic Lena the other day. Hate that, I hated that run so much.
So what we can do now, as we got the ice blast off.
Was ten minutes ahead, you guys, ten minutes, and they lost all of it, it's fine, I'm not bitter.
So because he roll, because he rolled so high. Uh. Lena's out of stamina unfortunately, so we're gonna need to, uh, we are gonna need to do the defend just because she's completely out of stamina. But what we know is that for, that Gloop specifically is going to, his next thing, he's gonna do the take in, which is gonna be a blue element on the field. So we're basically set up as best as we can. Uh, we could, what we want to potentially do though is that, if he does take in on Lena. Uh, and gives her the flu, she can't frog prince, so we might want, so let's get ser- because we have the stamina right now. Again, this is slow, but this is just contingency, especially since we're still new. And not trying to be like super fast, super optimal yet, we're just trying to be consistently, consistent through fights. We can get the surge one, cuz that's, where's the medicine?
It should be on the level two.
Yeah.
So you need to have two.
Yeah, so we have the medicine now. Uh, so we can do that, so now we can go back and now we can defend, and now Lena can defend, so now he's gonna do his take in. Lena did not get, so, actually, so that was bad, I, I messed up. Because.
Cuz now sir, oh.
It's more so that, uh, Lena doesn't have enough stamina to get the frog prince.
Yeah.
And that's why we wanted, so that's actually why, so doing the surge, uh, contingency plan was actually a bad idea. Because we wanted Lena to be negative. When he did take in, so that she got a better stam refresh.
Right.
So now we're just gonna have to. So he just went, we know he has eight AP to work with, we just need to, Lena needs six. To go off, we're not gonna be able to. Unless he rolls high, cuz Lena nee- Lena needs to hit all five ones and then frog prince, which is six AP worth, Gloop is eight.
Nudge.
Uh, and the most we can get Lena back is, uh, like two stamina, which isn't enough cuz she needs the, the six. So we're probably just, we're, we're gonna have to. Yolo defend again. And just let him attack, cuz after those, he'll just, he'll just do attacks, no big deal, whatever, it's slow, that was my mess up. But now we can go. And then frog prince him. This might not kill cuz I don't know if magnify or genius fell off or anything like that because of the screwed up, uh, contingency plan. Yeah, that was kinda low. No, nevermind, killed him.
I wish there are better indicators for those things, by the way, in this game.
For.
Um, cuz like you've got the corners, right, that like show you, um. Different effects, but like I wish, like there's no like actual counters for buffs, right?
Yeah.
Like that's, that's something I've always been like, game, you could be better. Unless I'm blind, unless there is something and I'm just not realizing it.
Yeah, the tur- the turn elements can, but the, the, the strength ends and the geniuses and stuff and the eagle eyes. Until the eagle, until you don't have the ninety-nine accuracy anymore.
Or I know, right, like that.
Go high, you're just like, oh, cool, neat.
Like shouldn't there be a better way for this, there, there's totally, could easily be ways this game could like actually show you. Those things, and it doesn't. The developers are just get good, like you should, you know what turn number you're on, you know what turn you use this thing on.
Surge is gonna one, and then genius Lena. So it's gone. Dynamic camera.
Yeah.
Lena still gets to go, she's just gonna build up towards her, as much as she can towards her ice blast. Okay.
Yeah, I think PH, that actually for sure confused me for a very long time, like. Was it actual turn numbers or was it based off of stamina, like, like that's never explained in the game. Like, how long status effects last, at least I, if it does, I didn't pick up on it. Which is not good. And, and like another good thing to bring up on a like a one-on-one type of scenario, because like that's for sure, it's not obvious how long.
But here's a case where Lena got taken, it, like, we were good to go, she was point one stamina shy, it's unfortunate. And then she got frozen, so we're gonna have to do the. Medicine strat.
But yeah.
That was three. Three, four. So we have to, we're gonna have to hope he, well, we don't have to hope he high-rolls because it's, it's Gloop, he's not that scary, but if, if he goes here. Which he didn't, he rolled one higher, cuz that was eight, he, he would have gone there if he min-rolled. But, yeah.
He's a Dan.
Should be.
These, the death animations for these bosses are way too long.
Oh yeah.
Yeah, PH, I mean, my point is PH, the game never actually tells you how much stamina, right? Like it never, that's never explained, and I, and I think that's definitely something that. And it's not easy to find that information, in my opinion, I don't know, and that, that took me an embarrassingly long time that I'd like to admit. To figure out that it was stamina based, is, is all I'm saying.
Yeah, so those are two fights, do you have, uh, so that, that was basically like the. The idea I had, just like walking through.
Yeah, no, that's perfect.
Contingency plans.
This is perfect.
Do you have specific things like, at different parts that you wanted, that you wanted to?
I don't know, I mean, I, obviously I feel like.
Ask a question about, or like something?
A lot of them are actually like post cat percent. Um, cuz like, like this, this I can now go back for cat percent, and I think I'm, I'm good by myself to figure stuff out, um.
For sure.
It's, there's just a lot to consider, it, there's just a lot of, um. I mean, when you think about like Miguel and like Fate and Dragon God, and like, why these fights are so scary for the speedrun. Um, like they're, I guess they're each very much case by case basis, and so, um. Because they all have special triggers or, you know, things about them that make them. Hard to, to work with, right, so like even though we have a script, I mean, and then there's stuff like Garai, right, where you're just like. You cheese it with Marcy and just understanding the cheese is kind of the key to that fight versus, you know, something like Miguel. Um, or Fate, like Fate's countdown or things like that, um. Um, and I, I probably now is not the time, like, this is not the stream session to, to kinda go into those. Actual strats and why they work and, you know, how to improvise and all that, um. And yeah, especially like we were saying, like identifying like the danger zones, like. What, what are the win conditions for the specific fight that inspire the strat and the script? Um, I think we're fine, I think I'm fine, I think I'm good to. There's definitely gonna be individual questions, but I think, I think this was a good just general basis.
An- answer them as one-offs.
Yeah, so thanks.
As wanted, as wanted slash needed.
Thanks for, you know, I lo- I love how like you ca- came into this way after me, and, and I love that you're the one explaining this to me. Um, and yeah, thanks for everyone else like PH and Handy and, and Isala and everyone else, um. Answering questions and stuff as well, like have, so I was having experts in the room, um. But this is helpful, I, I do better, like I need to be able to just like. To, like I have to like teach to, uh, learn something almost, and so being able to just have an opportunity to say out loud. This is how I think this is going, am I, am I, how far off the mark am I? Um, has been really nice, so. Um, especially cuz like, I don't know, watching, watching speedrunning, like just as a spectator type sport, like there's a lot. Um, has been really nice, so, um, especially cuz like, I don't know, watching, watching speedrunning, like, just as a spectator type sport, like, there's a lot of this stuff that like, even if you guys explain on this stream, like, it's just hard to pick up as a spectator and now.
You don't recognize that it's actually happening and like what that, what doing something like that actually involves.
Yeah, so now that I've run cat percent like five or six times at this point, like I'm starting to, like I, like, it's nice to come back to this and have this discussion now that I understand a lot of the more basic stuff about running the speedrun, it's been really helpful, so. Um, yeah, I don't know, I, I don't have any other specific questions at this time. I mean, ideally, it'd be just really nice to, to literally go through each boss and identify all those things about each boss fight, but like, that's like not practical to do, like.
Hello, Starboy Justin.
But, yeah, British Columbia, Canada, sweet. That's cool.
Yeah, a lot, a lot of these fights are actually just kinda like, like more or less, uh, training dummies kinda thing. There's not terribly many that are super scary, like I would say personally, like, uh, Polly and Fargo are free. There's not terribly much that can go wrong, just they can go slowly.
Right, yeah, the, yeah, the worst that can happen is you lose time, but like you're not, they're not gonna be, they're not gonna end the run, right?
Right. Yeah, it's just that you're gonna lose time depending on how much you miss and et cetera, et cetera, but like Polly, Polly's basically free, it's just a matter of whether you get flapped one time or twice. Or how low Polly rolls, which will help determine that. Fargo's basically free cuz he's like, he's a, he's a fairly low AP, but like you just beat the crap out of him. He doesn't really do anything scary, all he does is really auto attack. He strengthens himself, he attacks you, but you kill him before like, uh, or it gets anything, so like.
Stamina pushing is.
Fargo's also a blue and eight that casts red, yeah. But like, yeah, a lot, a lot of them are, like.
Yeah, what's up with that, by the way? That, I know that confused me for a long time, like, why is Fargo using, anyway?
Anyway, yeah, like, a lot of them are like pretty straightforward, they're pretty free, there's not terribly much that can go wrong, it's just a matter of how bullied you get with RNG and missing, but there's not a lot of places for you to die. Later on, obviously, there's a bunch of cases where you could potentially like straight up die. But yeah, a lot of them, a lot of them are straightforward.
Yeah, so I, I just personally would wanna just go through and actually like star the, you know, I, like, that, that would just be for, for my sanity in, when I'm in the moment in a speedrun and then like just knowing like for, like for, just for any, or any newbie going into this, just knowing, oh, like, these fights aren't like death. Like, or, or they're, yeah, like you're saying, these are basically free fights, like the stat, the, the strat's pretty straightforward, you, you just attack them and, and so.
But the main risk you, you're losing is time.
Yeah, so, so the, the whole, the fight is just get good at speedrunning that fight, right? And then, and then there's others, like Marcy, or yeah, there's others where it's like, no.
Can get, it can go very poorly and game over you. Or put you in a really bad spot out of nowhere, like Bun- like Bunyp can just low roll you and inferno you after bad things. And that's, that's no bueno, or like what happened in our cat percent race last night where Lynx just decided to kill Serge on like turn two. Out of nowhere, and I didn't do anything, and I just Yolo'd it because it was funny.
You're like, oh, well, that's, that's it.
I pulled the, I pulled the Azala for our first cat percent race, but I, um, but I, Lena, Lena hit the three. Lena, Lena was the only one alive.
Perfect, yeah, thanks so much, um, Nish for doing this with me, um, I hope this was like as helpful for you as it was for me, um, I don't know. You probably didn't learn too much new, but, um, yeah, and again, I already thanked everyone in the chat, but I'll thank you guys again. Thanks for being here and answering questions, um, and having a good time with us tonight. Um, I need to remember to post my PowerPoint on my Discord, but I, I am gonna call it here just to say, uh, it's getting really late and I still haven't finished Genshin Dailies for today, so. And it's a really exciting time for me cuz I'm gonna hit air forty-five, so.
Yeah.
I'm really excited for that, um, but yeah, is there, who, is anyone, um, want to have anyone specifically want to raid? Or is nobody on anymore? Cuz I, we, we went pretty late with this. Um, not too many people are on anymore. Unfortunately, yeah, who's got suggestions? I'm all for raid suggestions. Yes, goodnight, PH, thank you so much, um.
Stop streaming, my, sharing my screen.
Yeah, thank you. I'll switch this over so it's not like awkward. Um.
Oh, that timing was great, holy crap, that was amazing.
Let's see, is anyone playing Chronocross right now? I didn't check the, the ti- nope, just me, and I'm not even really playing it. I, I probably should have switched this over to just chatting, I don't know. I, I, I don't know what the, where the line is with Twitch with the, with those things.
No, I mean, you've got people.
Um, I literally don't know who, like, everyone that's available are like the, uh, hold on. I'm gonna raid, we're gonna raid, um, there's an artist that I don't think I've raided yet, and she is the, uh, and I think I've raided her once, um, but she, it's her birthday today, actually, I think, if I remember correctly, so we're gonna raid her. Um, she's the artist that did my avatar, that's on my Twitch avatar. And it wasn't, I didn't ask for that for Twitch, but like, I had that commissioned for a different reason and I decided to use it for this, so. Yeah, thanks you guys so much, um, Nish is probably gonna be streaming Batan Kaitos tomorrow, uh, is that still happening or you're still filling that out?
Thursday.
Oh, Thursday, okay, so.
Thursday, cuz Thursday's was normally my D and D day, but we're not doing it anymore.
Oh, perfect, okay, so tomorrow, so yeah, if you guys wanna check out my stream still, I will be playing Odin Sphere tomorrow. Um, and then, um, if you wanna check out Mad Refugee, he's gonna, um, he usually streams the raids that he and I and Azala play on Final Fantasy XIV, and that'll be on Wednesday, and then he'll be playing Batan Kaitos on Thursday, so that'll be fun.
Very much hopefully, I'm looking to, looking forward to getting back to it, and what, and a, a story that's not wibbly wobbly, timey wimey.
Right, uh, that you can explain in like less than an hour.
Yeah, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to like come up with like, a, a, a deck, I'm gonna, not, not, I'm not gonna make a PowerPoint, but I'm gonna make like notes to to recap the story cuz it's been over a month at this point.
Thank you, I will appreciate that. Batan Kaitos PowerPoint, yes. Um, but yeah, so I'll see you guys, um, I'll see you guys tomorrow for Odin Sphere, and then I'll probably hopefully sprinkle in a, a, a cat percent at some point this week. Um, but definitely not as late, so, yeah, thank you guys so much, I'll see you guys later, bye. Ooh, gotta stretch, everyone stretch and hydrate. And say hi to Zelda, she's a great artist.